We've turned it off, turned it back on several times. I don't know if there's a whole lot else that we know to do as planners to try and fix it, but I've got to text into IT and I guess we'll just, we'll do the best we can.
Okay. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I open the September 2019 Planning Commission meeting. If you will, please silence your cell phones to keep the disturbances down from that, please. Ambrose will call.
Here.
He understands how to proceed. The commission is presented with agenda items by the planning department and then a representative for that item has an opportunity to make comments and answer some specific questions from the commission if it's necessary. And then, if required, I'll open a public hearing and that will be the opportunity for anybody to come forward and speak on that subject. We want everybody to be heard, so please come up and I ask you that as soon as you're done speaking, please sign up on our check or sheet over here on the podium. We ask you to keep your time to five minutes when you make the comments and keep the comments and discussion relevant to the case at hand. Once everybody's spoken, I will close the public hearing and then the representative will have an opportunity to answer any questions or respond to issues that might have been brought up at the time during the discussion. We'll then open the floor to the Planning Commission for questions and comments and a motion. The commission will vote based on applicable and local state and local laws, the city's comprehensive Plan 2030, and for the general good of the community. Now, having summarized the basics of the Planning Commission hearing process, I also want to make a couple of comments about our roles and responsibilities when it comes to approval of subdivision flats, of which we have a few here tonight. By the Alabama statutes, a municipal planning commission such as ours has the final authority for subdivision flats. With regards to these subdivision flats, the commission acts as an administrative body that's bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we have adopted by the commission. But public hearings, they will also still have a public hearing on each of these as well, and they are required for each preliminary plat. And we welcome any comments from the public on those as well. But I would like to note that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements codified in laws and regulations. So we ask that if you intend to speak, please sign in again and we'll carry on with our meeting. So the first order of business is citizens' communication. Now, this is a time where anybody can come up and speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight, or it might be in the consent agenda. Now, we have two cases in the consent agenda, Woodward Oaks and Tuscany Hill, and we also have our meeting minutes. Would anybody like to come forward and speak at this time? Okay, seeing no one, I will move along to the consent agenda. Because we do not have any rule of business. It consists of two meeting minutes for the pack meeting for August 5th, regular meeting August 8th, and as I mentioned, PL case 2019-446 for Woodward Oaks, Phase 2 Final Plat Approval for a Performance Residential Subdivision. Item 2 on the consent agenda is 2019-447, Tuscany Hills, Section 41, waiver for one here.
Thank you. You do have just two items tonight. We start with the final plat request for Woodward Oaks Phase 2. We are up on the north northwest area of the city off North Donahue Drive. Either crosshatch property that you see extending all the way from North Donahue to the south up to Farmville Road is part of the Woodward Oaks Plan Development. That development is in its initial phases. This is Phase 2. This is entirely a townhouse phase, and it's the only townhouse phase in the entire Plan Development District. Seventy-one townhouse lots with open space. You can see it's configured in a rotunda, if you will, and these are fee simple townhomes coming just off the east side of the major, go up and through the entire Plan Development District. That was the preliminary plat that you previously considered. This is just a zoom in of the final plat, and you can see all of the lots. We talked about the orientations of how the townhouses would be and the rear loading for vehicular purposes to the lots. We talked a little bit about that at packet meeting this past Monday. This is an overall image of the master development plan for the Woodward Oaks Plan Development. You can see they're going to be working their way from the south to the north, Phase 1 being single-family detached lots, and here we're considering Phase 2, which are fee simple townhouse lots. The plat does meet the requirements of our subdivision regulations, and we've recommended approval. This is just an aerial view of the subject property. Of course, these aerial images are a couple of years old and will soon be updated for you, with Camden Ridge off to the west side and Donahue Ridge up to the north northwest. Secondly, we have a single bond extension waiver request on your agenda this evening for Tuscany Hills, Section 4. This is generally located kind of right in the smack dab in the middle of the current development. You can see the subject lots that are part of this Section 4 outlined in a black and white hatching. And then, of course, our Engineering Services Department always provides you with this exhibit to illustrate essentially what stage the development is in, in terms of a reaching build out, with the darker shade or the purple representing under construction or constructed, and the lighter pea green being yet to be developed. We had a question at packet meeting about some street naming of Tuscany Hills Drive, and the question was, was the intent for the, this is actually the lot layout that was initially submitted some 12 or 13 years ago, and the subdivision by and large has followed this master lot layout. This is not a Plan Development District, so this lot layout is not binding. But in fact, you do see the circular Tuscany Hills Drive coming back around and connecting back to its original origination point. So just wanted to provide that, and that is a good exhibit, just to provide the commission, just so you can see how this development is continuing to build out. We recommend approval of both items. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Motion to say aye?
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll move on to new business. Item 30, PL 2019-44, for a major street plan update recommendation to City Council for approval of amendments to the city of Auburn Major Street Plan, Mr. President.
Good afternoon. Before you... Is a request to the City Council to update our major street plan. The last update was in 2013. And just by way of some information, we've gone through most of this in packet meeting, in a work session, excuse me. The major street plan is our plan for arterial roadways, collectors, residential collectors, and local commercial streets. Although we depend heavily on local roadways, those are not reflected on our map. The major street plan is a tool that we utilize to assess traffic needs and look at, as information for developers as well as citizens. And the plan identifies some general alignments. They're not exact. They're pretty close because we evaluate topography when we determine the alignments. But it is a plan generally that we use as we move forward developing the city of Auburn. So the updates you'll see today are based on alignment changes. Some are new roadways, new roadways. Some are changes in classifications. And then there are also some deletions or proposed roadways based on current conditions. One of the things also that you'll notice is that we've added some alignments in the north and northwest part of the city, kind of in the outer perimeter there. And we've also contemplated an east-west connection north of Sugar Jordan Parkway between college and, excuse me, an east-west connections north of Sugar Jordan Parkway and Academy Drive. The staff report outlines the updated alignments. It outlines the updated classifications and then the few deletions that we have. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions?
Blue and purple light, that's right.
Second.
Got the motion to second and further discussion on the motion. Hearing done. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number four, PL 2019-261 zoning ordinance text amendment recommendation to City Council for approval of the city of Auburn zoning ordinance. Ms. Robinson, Wilson.
Yes, good evening. The request tonight is recommendation to City Council for the approval of some text amendments to the zoning ordinance, specifically Articles 4, 5, 8, and 9. The primary purpose of the bulk of the amendment is due to integrating the street classifications from the engineering classification, Engineering Construction and Design Manual with the corridor overlay regulations of the zoning ordinance. The corridor overlay regs set forth regulations to help ensure that development along the main corridors and thoroughfares of the city are developed in visually pleasing and economical viable to the city. So, the bulk of the change is replacing a specific set of streets that are in the zoning ordinance with the streets outlined in the arterial road list and corridor list of the engineering manual. And the lists before you are from the manual, and the ones with asterisks are currently non-corridor streets. So as far as arterials go, there are only a couple that are not currently corridor streets. And there are several collector roads that are not currently corridor streets, but those are going to be added. There are, one of the other updates to the regulations is to reduce conflict between sections of the code. So properties that are along these corridors and corridor streets that are zoned rural and industrial will be exempt from these regulations. And another purposeful amendment was to remove the general right-of-way setback of 20 feet along the corridor streets since most of the zones that we're creating are specific, trying to move the buildings closer up to the road. And then we did some cleanup through the rest of the ordinance, Article 6 or 8, I can't remember, with signs. There was just a cleanup to, the ordinance had one square foot per linear foot of frontage, in parentheses was the 2, so we just changed the 1 to the 2. And that was it.
Thank you. Okay, this one requires a public hearing, so I open the public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, motions.
Blue and purple light, that's right.
Second.
Second and further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item number five, case PL 2019-437, Sand Hill Acres Annexation. Recommendation to City Council for now.
Good evening. This case is an annexation application for approximately 23 and a half acres on the southeast of town, really southwest of Hillendale Drive, or 8998 Hillendale Drive, and approximately 1,700 feet from Ala Hill Drive. Ala Hill Drive being this road right here. The property consists of lots 7 and 8 of the Sand Hill Acres subdivision comprises roughly 11.9 acres for Lot 7, which is in the north, and 11 and a half acres for Lot 8, which is the lot in the south. This is an odd case since one of the properties is inside the optimal boundary, Lot 7, the one to the north. However, the one to the south is not inside the optimal boundary, and as such, staff's recommendation follows its policy of adhering to the comp plan, and so we're recommending approval of Lot 7 and denial of Lot 8. However, we wanted to point out the kind of oddity with the boundary in the comp plan. As you can see along the southern, along its southern border, it's fairly consistent, which is what the original intent was to do. And it does this odd exclusion of Lot 8 before coming back and continuing on the same consistent line. From our research, I wasn't able to determine a reason why that is. And so as such, I'm pointing that out for your consideration to potentially bring that in despite the staff recommendation in this particular case.
Okay, thank you.
Here is a quick pending lot layout of those two lots together, creating four lots, which is a separate case but applies here. And a quick overhead. Pending your questions.
Should we decide to bring Lot 8 inside the optimal boundary? Does that need to be done separately from?
No, I think if you'd like, you can approve the petition as it's been requested to be approved. And what we'll do is the next time we update the comp plan, we'll just round that boundary out. You may recall, we had a case on the north where we had a valley and we filled in some of those areas, and somehow we just missed this anomaly. So we'll make sure we clean that up. Should you see fit to recommend approval of both parcels?
Okay, this requires a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this, Sand Hill Acres Annexation? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for questions, comments, or motion from the commission.
I would like to move to approve Lot 7 and 8 to close that lot inside the optimal boundary.
Motion in a second and further discussion?
Motion is subject to a draw in the document.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, item number six, CL 2019-217, rezoning has been requested by the applicant to be postponed until a date certain of October 10th. So we will not have a public hearing, but I still need a motion to postpone from the commission.
Move to postpone item six until October 10th meeting.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
As opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, the next item is agenda item number seven, PL 2019-438, Cox rezoning from rural to comprehensive development district. And I'd like to note that this is related to the next item, which is item number eight, 2019-439, which has to do with the use of that particular property, the ecological insulation. So we'll, we want to keep these separate. We're looking at the change of zoning for the first consideration, and then we will look at approving the conditional use for the second agenda item. So we'll start first with the number seven, which is 2019-438 Cox Road rezoning from rural to comprehensive development district. Mr. Caldwell.
Good evening. Before you knight is a request to rezone approximately 3.2 acres. The property is owned by Green River Real Estate Investment LLC, represented by David Kahn. This property was annexed in 1985, and you, some of you may recall that it came in for a rezoning to CDD in 2017. The Planning Commission recommended approval, and the City Council denied the request in March of 17. The property is along Cox Road at the terminus of West Veterans on the west side of the street. This is just north of Exit 50 Interstate Interchange. It's surrounded by a mixture of annexed and unincorporated property. To the east, an industrial park, as well as to the west, a little further off the map, down Corporate Parkway. And it is a nestling of rural with residential uses to the west, northwest, and north. A vacant piece of CDD that was annexed shortly after the previous denial is to the south. Again, that property's vacant. The same map identifying the subject property, but what's represented is the future land use plan. This plan was, the original comprehensive plan from 2012 was amended a couple of years back as part of the Exit 50 land use study. This property, the subject property is in that hatched area, representing office park and commercial and industrial support. At the time that land use plan was put into place, it was done with a rigorous study of the interchange pending its opening, recognizing the industrial uses that are on either side of Cox Road and the growth that would accommodate, or that would come with the Interstate Interchange. All that to be said, that the request that's before you, staff is supportive of, that CDD, that we believe CDD is a very appropriate zone for this future land use class, as this area of the city undergoes its change via the, or because of the Interstate Interchange. Here's an aerial to show you the general nature of development. See the lot, subject property in the middle, residential properties behind and to the north, unincorporated trailer park to the southeast, and industrial development to the east. Staffs available for any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Caldwell, could you, I was not a member of this commission in March of 17. Can you paraphrase why the City Council chose to ignore the recommendation and deny?
I couldn't speak for him. I know there was opposition then to this, to this rezoning, a very similar rezoning by a different applicant for a different use, but very similar in nature.
Has anything changed? What's changed?
Nothing's changed. The comprehensive plan has remained the same. Staff's recommendation remains the same.
And why are we seeing it again? It's just over time, a certain amount of?
Well, the council denied the request initially. The staff had recommended approval, as did the Planning Commission. The council denied it. Once they wait more than a year, they can reapply for the same request. So they've opted to take another shot at it.
My question is, so if it was just an office, it's allowed by right?
Not in rural.
So it has to be rezoned, no matter what, if anything happens?
Right. The subsequent conditional use would address the warehouse. Office would be permitted by right in CDD.
Okay, got it.
The whole dynamics of that area changed when the interchange was installed.
Right.
Which allowed us, the city, to extend its parks, investment, and that's why the land use plan reflected this. Unfortunately, there are people who live in these large lots that are adjacent to all of this and will eventually be approached, I'm sure, for people wanting to use their property, purchase their property for more intensive use. And in the meantime, we've got these conflicts.
Okay. All right, well, let's hear about some of those conflicts. So I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. And remember, this is about the rezoning only at this time and not the use. So if anybody would like to come forward and talk about the rezoning, please come forward.
Forrest reminded me, we have had a couple of email correspondence, all in opposition. All seem to be residents in the vicinity.
Was there a theme in the feedback in terms of like what?
Incompatibility with residential, current existing residential development area.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Marcus, just wanted to warn you, I think your microphone is the culprit, so really got to project.
Are you going to come up and speak on this? Come on. If you'll please state your name and address and make sure you've signed in after you're done. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Dr. Stephen Hamrick. I reside at 2071 Fieldview Drive, Auburn, Alabama. I'm in the neighborhood in question. As regards to zoning, I would like to first get some clarification, if I could. Let me first, I'll say I appreciate the efforts of Forrest Cotton to get my information to the commission, above and beyond the call of duty, and I appreciate his efforts.
Usually does that.
Yes. As I understand it, let me tell you what I understand, so that we can all make sure we're all on the same footing. So this study that was done for the future land use in 2014, the Exit 50 study, it was done to widen or broaden the applicable zoning in the area that we're talking about, correct?
It was essentially a comprehensive land use study of that area and the environment of the interchange, recognizing the dynamics and anticipating that we will begin to see a lot of property. About two-thirds, if not more than two-thirds of the property that was part of the study area is still in unincorporated Lee County. But in an effort to try to be proactive from a city planning standpoint, we felt it was appropriate to land use plan for the entire area so that if and when someone does want to come and annex, they have some idea of what the city would be inclined to support from a use perspective.
Okay. Back in the end of July, I came to the open house for my area, and I talked at that time with Jason Kip. He summarized the future land use changes at that point. However, he did not mention the things that were going on with this Exit 50 use plan. I haven't even heard of it until this week. So it rather caught me by surprise. I was wondering if there could be some explanation of the major finding of this plan, and is this plan available to be read by the public?
The plan is available.
Yeah, we do have the, we have, it was identified as a study area, and so we conducted that relatively concurrent when we did the Renew Opalika Road, which I would call more of a large-scale future land use study. We did do an Exit 50, so there's a lot of material associated with that. There was a staff report that accompanied it, so certainly we can make that information available to you.
Had a public hearing on it also.
Yes, sir. Absolutely, you did.
The State Council did.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another thing that I saw was that typically dwellings of this type are warehouses that will be housing materials, such as we're talking about, typically are not allowed in technology parks according to the city's standards. Could we get clarification on why that is, why they cannot be stored in technology parks?
That I'm not aware of.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
As I understand from reading the material in the city's bylaws, they said that these kinds of warehouses could not be stored in, could not be built in technology parks. They could not be built there for some reason.
Yeah, this area is outside of it. In fact, the area that surrounds the tech parks were purposely designed for commercial support, warehouse type uses, as ancillary uses that very well might likely support the industrial uses in the industrial park. So if we go back to, let's say, the, so yeah, we included that future land use layer, so this area in here, what the industrial parks themselves, of course, the West Tech Park is out of the frame of this image, but all of the crosshatching area generally surrounds this interstate commercial area, where essentially we've land use planned for hospitality type uses that you would normally see at interstate interchanges. And the purple is the North Tech Park. And then, if you were to zoom out, you would see that a lot of this property slated with the office park, commercial, and industrial support uses sort of wraps around those industrial parks to provide essentially the support, the support uses and needs of the industrial parks.
Could you explain the term industrial support? I'm not familiar with it. I have not seen that designation except for this one area.
Well, we do have a good example of the types of uses that we would anticipate locating this area. If you, if those of you that are familiar with the area behind the mall, Mall Boulevard, Mall Parkway, where you have a lot of contractor storage uses.
Cable TV places out there.
That's right. The cable TV places out there. You have some plumbing industry that's out there. We called them contractor builder uses. In my prior jurisdiction, you know, you'll have a, you'll have a small showroom or warehouse, a small showroom, kind of a retail component, and then they typically have service trucks and their parts and things like that, whether they're electricians or plumbers or what have you.
I see. And so to have this warehouse be in this area, it has to be rezoned to the comprehensive development district, correct?
Yes, sir. That would, that district would enable that use to locate there, yes. That would, that, that district would enable that use to locate there, yes, sir.
Would you elaborate on the requirements that these people have to meet to get this rezoning? There, there are requirements listed in, in the original application they made.
Well, the fundamental requirement is that the zoning be consistent with the future land use plan. And, and of course, zoning takes form in a couple, you know, a property owner can initiate any request for rezoning of anything, and then it gets analyzed and the recommendations rendered by the staff and ultimately by the commission to the city council. With, with larger area plans, we have gone in and actually, the city has initiated zoning activity on a large scale. We, we opted to not do that for this particular initiative because it was a, it was a smaller initiative, and we knew that, and it was, it was more of a, of a peripheral area where we would anticipate this type of activity would occur over a much longer timeframe than, for example, in an infill area like downtown in Renew Opalika Road where those needs were very much imminent.
As I understand, another requirement is that you also take into account the adjoining properties and potential hazards or difficulties that might arise from placing such a thing there in relation to the people already residing there, correct?
We looked at all of that when we conducted the exit 50 study.
Sir, we're going to have to limit your time here because what we need, these are questions that you can ask the planning staff at a different time. This is not really the forum for this. We'd like to hear what your comments on, if you're for or against this, and some of the reasons behind that. And you've been using up your time, so I'll give you about a minute to wrap up, please, and we'd like to have somebody else come up.
Okay. Basically, I do object to it. My primary objection, which all of you should have, is that these people be storing hazardous materials in, in this warehouse. They are of such incendiary, that's not the right word, excuse me, they're such of a poisonous, hazardous nature, they would cause great harm if there was a spill, an accident of any kind, and the, the lives of the people around here, their welfare could be, could be greatly affected if there is any accident, fire or anything else that would cause a leakage of the materials they use, especially their spray foam installation. I would encourage you to consider that this is not an appropriate building to be placed in a neighborhood.
We're also talking about the use rather than the rezoning, so we can have that discussion at the next item, so let's move along.
I understand. I was concerned I might not get a chance to speak again, so I just wanted to focus that.
Well, you can speak again, for the use on the next item.
Okay, I appreciate that. I do apologize for that, for not understanding.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come up, talk about the rezoning? Are you coming up as a representative or public? Can you hang on a second, let me close the public hearing? Anybody else like to talk about the rezoning? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, too quick. You jumped first, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Lula Wiggum Maribel, and I live at 2762 Cox Road, Auburn, 36832. And I'm a neighbor of the property under discussion. I have lived at this location for almost 40 years, and so I have a lot invested, both personally, family, and income-wise. And so I'm opposed to the rezoning of this property. I'm opposed because I'm concerned about the increased traffic that we have already seen over the years, and I believe that if we rezone and add a business, another business, that is only going to increase the, the traffic. I'm concerned about my own safety when I'm driving down Cox Road and the amount of traffic that occurs bumper to bumper. And sometimes it's hard for me to even turn onto my property because of the traffic that is either meeting me or behind me. I'm also concerned about the school safety property. A few years ago, we had maybe one bus coming down Cox Road. Now, on a given day, you may meet two or three school buses, and you see traffic lined up behind the school buses and in front of the school buses. Less than a week ago, I saw a school bus that stopped right at the corner of my property, and the parent was waiting to get her child off the bus. There was so much traffic behind the school bus and in front of the school bus. I don't know what happened, whether this kid was afraid or just froze up, but it seems like she was afraid to get off the bus. And finally, the mother ran across the street and actually pulled her child off the bus and wrapped her in her arm and carried her back across the road. Now, I don't know all of the details of what was going on or what was transpiring, but it certainly got my attention. So I'm really concerned about the safety. Another concern I do have is about the possible decrease in the value of my property and the property of those affected. A few years ago, it was a quiet, sleepy little two-lane road, and now we know what it is today. There's just so much concern, so much concern about the value and the safety. So those are my major concerns.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind, please sign up on the list here. Anybody else like to speak on this item? Come on up. And we're speaking about the rezoning, right? Okay, thanks.
Which threw me off a little bit because I was going to speak to both, but I'll, I'll keep it to the rezoning. My name's Olivia Ficken, and I live at 2060 Fieldview Drive, which shares that back property line with the proposed rezoning. The two little ones you've heard in the back are mine, and I have major concerns for the safety. When we met with Mr. Khan, he told us that there would be 18-wheelers in and out from seven to five, and Ms. Maribel's concern about the buses, I know the child she's talking about, they live across the street, and I'm sure there's a lot of wonderful truck drivers, but I don't want them looking over the fence at my baby girl playing in the yard. I just don't, there's too much, there's too many creepers out there. I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, that's a major concern of mine. And that would be any business, whether it's ecological insulation that's proposing this change or any business. I mean, you can see there's like a chunk right there that you would like to make the support, industrial support. And so we feel that it would be in everyone's best interest to find buyers, businesses, whatever you want to call it, and make a strategic plan to attract great businesses, not just have little pop-up shops and end up with a hodgepodge city mess and allow whoever to come in there. Because our property value is going to go down. I mean, bottom line, it's going to go down. When I asked Mr. Khan, I said, what would you do if you were us in this situation? His exact words were, I would sell my house and move. Meaning, he is not willing to live beside his own business. So, you know, it's very concerning. I mean, it would be the financial demise of several wonderful families. I mean, there's a bunch of kids, all the kids right here, you see, those are our neighbors, that's our babysitter, my two kids, there's kids across the street, they're going to be all over the place in 18-wheelers and chemicals, and it's just, it's not safe. And I don't mean to get so hyped up about it, but it's just, when you talk about my babies, you know, I can't in good conscience say, this is a wonderful idea. Like, yeah, you know, and I'm not dumb enough to think that we don't have a great property and it shouldn't be developed, but make a fair offer to everybody so that we can all benefit, you know? So I think that was all I had to say about the rezoning. I'll be back to the other portion.
Please do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody else? All right. Come on. Why don't you talk about the rezoning?
Talk about what now?
The rezoning.
Oh, I thought we were talking about football.
Oh, yeah. If you want to talk about that, that'd be great.
My name's Clay Langford, and as Olivia said, I've got my wife and five children who all reside at 2021 Fieldview, which is the property, I guess that would be to the northwest of the proposed rezoning. When you opened this motion for rezoning, you asked the question, what has changed? And the answer you got was nothing has changed.
What I got?
Since, since we went through this in 2017. Now, neither myself or any of my neighbors are oblivious to the fact that, you know, there's change coming out there, there's opportunities out there, but there's a way to do business and there's a way not to do business. There, there's so many variables, like Ms. Maribel spoke to, the traffic out there is horrendous. If you put a business in that location, you're looking, it's already a two-lane that goes to a four-lane, it's a bottleneck. And when we take kids to school in the morning, you may have cars backed up from Longleaf to Wire Road. I mean, that's a half a mile. I mean, there, there's a lot of opportunity out there for not only us, but everyone, but there's, there's a certain way to do it, and, and this is not the way to do it. You don't, you don't cherry pick, you know, you don't go in and buy a residential piece of property and come back and say, we want to convert to commercial. You know, we're against it. We, we don't think it's right. Like Olivia said, we're willing to work with, with whoever to, to make a, a plan of action, so to speak. I think most anybody would do that. If, if the city has plans to, to develop this area, then certainly they should put together a plan. And we look forward to working with y'all any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, please sign in if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is Adam Ficken. As Olivia said, I'm the homeowner of the property that is due west of what is being proposed. So let me just start by saying I thank you for giving me an opportunity to share my thoughts tonight. Secondly, what I'd like to say is, I may say some things that are very direct here in the next few minutes, and I want everyone to be clear, in no way, shape, form, or fashion do I have an axe to grind with Mr. Khan or Mr. Williams. I wish them nothing but success in their endeavors. But with that said, I cannot let that success come at the cost of my family and some very dear people to me who live in this neighborhood, okay? To be 100% clear, we oppose the rezoning of this property for several reasons. Number one, protecting my family's health and well-being. Number two, a disruption to a very quiet neighborhood that we value and love, and I think if any of you ever came and stepped foot in my backyard, you would understand why I want to protect what we have. Number three, negatively impacting property values in and around the area. So let me first say, in relation to this zoning, all of us neighbors have collectively met, and we understand your 2030 plan, and we are willing to work with you on that. Meaning, if the city is truly interested in developing this property for commercial use, we are willing to entertain offers, all right? What we are asking the Khan and Williams family to do is to join us in that approach. Our thought is, if you look at this map, what's on the corner of Cox Road and Corporate Parkway is also available, and if you put our properties together, you're looking at a 20 to...
Excuse me, sir, we can't make these kind of deals in this forum.
I'm not asking you to. I'm, I'm just giving you the facts for, for what the zoning piece is. What we would like to see happen is all of us benefit at the same time. Meaning, if you guys go find the right corporate dancing partner, we will be the belle of the ball. If you allow what would be the centerpiece of that track to be developed for small business use, then the rest of the adjoining property becomes much less attractive, in our opinion. In terms of industrial support, certainly it makes sense being in between two industrial parks. However, this business primarily serves residential use, so I can't see that being something that constitutes industrial support, which I don't think supports the rezoning efforts. In my mind, businesses come and go for many reasons. Partnerships dissolve, they're sold, housing downturn, you name it. If you allow this business to come in and it doesn't survive for how many years, we're left to the mercy of whatever else would take that space. So I'm not interested in having 18-wheelers back up to the door, my back door. I'm not interested in trash service, emptying dumpsters in the middle of the night. And as Olivia said, you can put a five-foot burn, but an 18-wheeler, that doesn't do anything really to deter sound noise.
Again, again, we're talking about the use, and we need to stick to the rezoning, please.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying, sir, I'm...
Try to move proceedings along.
Understand. As I see it, Mr. Williams and Mr. Khan have options. They could do other things in terms of locating the business. There are spaces in the industrial parks that the city has...
Again, we're talking use again, please. It's the zoning that we're talking about here right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir, I'm, I'm trying to get to this. If, Mr. Khan's business would hold chemicals for spray foam insulation. According to the zoning ordinance that is set forth, chemical storage is not allowed in CDD. It is only allowed in industrial space. So because no one in this room could guarantee that the chemicals that are used in spray foam insulation would never be present in that facility, I can't support rezoning to CDD. And as we've mentioned, we don't really care to have those toxic chemicals on our back door either. In terms of timing, when I consider tearing down a house to build a warehouse right now, I can't help but feel that there's a tremendous amount of development that still needs to be done in and around the area. If all three industrial parks were full, if all the property that is available closer to the interstate exit there, it exit 50, was developed and the, and the growth was migrating north on Cox Road, I could understand that. But to me, it just feels like a raw deal where the city would be catering to one party, giving them an advantage at the expense and the cost of the others who have property adjacent to it. I know these decisions are difficult, and if it's possible tonight, I would like to ask each of you to respond with a yes or no vote, as opposed to just all in favor, aye or nay. I implore you to carefully consider the genuine concerns that these people bring forward tonight, knowing the quality of the people who make up this neighborhood, and I hope you've seen it firsthand tonight, they genuinely care about the city of Auburn and love it, that you would not do anything that would compromise or take away from their way of life. And I hope that you see the decision before you in the same way. So pray God give you wisdom to lead this city well, and I thank you for hearing me out tonight.
Sign in, please. Anybody else? Come on.
My name's Greg Harris. I'm from the neighborhood, 1815 Summit Lane, and I'd just like to voice my support for the people who live in this area, and I'm close to it. It is nice, on that piece of property, there is a nice house right now. And I know you mentioned that the rezoning and the Article 8 are separate issues, but if you do rezone, isn't, isn't something like Article 8 inevitable?
That's the purpose of this, of rezoning.
So they really...
Development.
Yeah, I know, they, they look like separate issues, but they aren't, kind of.
Administratively, for the purposes of this hearing, they are. They are separate.
But if it is rezoned, then there's nothing to stop somebody from, from putting something like a warehouse.
If it's with, if it meets the zoning ordinance, there, it's a legitimate development opportunity.
So I think you can understand why the people
Sure.
in the neighboring don't think of it, don't think of it as two distinct issues. Anyways, I just want to voice my support, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Already had your, your time.
I just want to answer a question. I, I wanted to clarify what his position was. I wasn't sure whether he said, he said I support, but I wasn't sure what...
Oh, he supports you.
Okay.
At least that's what I thought. Okay. Well, let's close the public hearing on this one. All the comments and, and that we've had here, believe it, we all feel, we've, I would like to say for all of us, we feel... all of us, we feel your pain on this sort of thing. You know, we're here, we love Auburn too, we want to do good by this community, but it, as it has been said a couple of different times here, this area is on its way to some pretty major growth. And, you know, while we're here as an administrative body, we're here to look at specific things, we make specific, you know, decisions. Making deals and making, you know, good businesses, decisions and all that kind of stuff is not before us and not our purview, and that's, there's a whole nother, you know, you have to work in a different environment for that. So we're just trying to look at the, you know, we're presented with certain laws, certain decisions we have to make based on those laws, and we just try to do the best we can with the input that you have. Now, we don't, so with that said, I'd like to open it to questions or comments to the commission or motion. Or, that's right, the representative for this, sorry, Parker Lewis with Hydro Engineering Solutions, I'm here on behalf of David Kahn, who's the business owner and the property owner. Just to clarify, I was not the representative previously when it was approved by city council, approved by planning commission and denied by city council. I don't think there was an accompanying use at that time, I know that's our next item, but I think when it went to council, I think there were just too many questions of what's planned for this property. Also, when it went to council, the parcel to the south of us was not CDD. It was, that parcel was subsequently zoned CDD. So I think it's important to know, it is a three-acre residence right now, but it's across the street from a county trailer park and next door to a CDD zone and across the street from an industrial park. Understand. Commercial support is the proposed use we'll talk about next. That is one of the things on the comp plan, you can see office park slash commercial and industrial support. So warehouse space is not allowed in industrial areas because our IDB doesn't want to spend that valuable land on simply warehouses. So it was a conscious decision to put it in industrial support areas? Absolutely. There's a reason the comp plan shows this as a buffer, a transition, maybe buffer is not the right word, a transition zone between interstate, commercial, industrial, and then as you see the green, you start to get into residential. That area in green going to the north is the area that's part of the current Cox Road plan, where they're starting to look at how that residential is handled from a medium density to a low density, et cetera. So just to point out a couple of things, we haven't answered any questions. Okay, and before we go on, I do have a question, the one that is really of interest to me, and I'm not, I don't know the answer to this, Mr. Cotton, chemical storage in CDD. Is that, is that a, chemical storage is only allowed in industrial? I mean, can you help me out with that, or is that-
Well, I was scanning my ordinance, I wasn't aware of that, and I didn't find it in the sections that I would have thought to look for if that existed. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I'm just saying I didn't see it in the brief amount of time that I was here.
Okay.
So I'm not-
What do you have there?
I have a print form this morning, sir.
Let you pass it up here. Thank you. So this is looking like Section 4, page 10 of the-
Permitted use.
Permitted use. I know the item next is use. I don't, I don't know if we're talking raw chemicals. You know, it is an insulation business, I don't know if they're going to have barrels and drums of chemicals, or if they're going to have product that is processed and made somewhere else. If they're classified as chemicals not allowed, then we have a problem. Exactly, that's a use question. Right. So, anyway.
Yeah, but it's still not really reselling.
Yeah, it's still not zoning. If it's zoned CDD- Thanks, sir, appreciate that. And the use is approved subsequently, then he's not going to be allowed to have chemicals if that's the case. So, but you see what I'm saying, there's a difference between raw chemicals and, I mean, you know, if you have plastics in your warehouse, well, at some point, that was a raw chemical, it's not a raw chemical anymore. Again, that's the use and not the zoning ordinance. So we're at a point now where we need to have some discussion or have a motion and a vote.
This is, Chairman, I remember when we discussed this two years ago.
All right, damn.
Most of you did. This is the most difficult thing to deal with in planning in a high-growth community, is when the city has moved out to the countryside, where people who've lived where they live for a long period of time in rural surroundings, but the growth in the city has caught up in many areas, town, all these areas. The key to triggering our land use plan was the new interchange. When you build new interchanges, that changes the whole scope of demand and type of uses. It's one of the most intensive, competitive, expensive pieces of property that you find is on interstate interchanges, particularly in towns like ours. So we groped with that issue the last time, and great sympathy with the people. Now, they're talking about, I would not be opposed, and we talked at the last time we dealt with this, about particularly those four parcels that are clustered there that are residential, one of which is already apparently sold to this, for this change, but I'm not opposed to rezoning all four of those parcels if they would request it. And we offered, I think several of us felt the same way last time. Now, there's two different values we have on property. One is the value we place on it intrinsically for our residents. Then there is value that comes in dollars and cents on property values. I can't say for certain, but I would say that most CDD property, particularly close to an interstate, would sell more, would get more, would cost more, would be more valuable than a residential property of the same size at that same location. So I think the main concern is, it's going to disturb, it certainly will disturb, change their lives out there. But this was started when the interchange was completed, and we have two obligations, and sometimes they come into conflict, and that's where we have it here. One obligation is to look after the general overall community's economic vitality and growth, and also to establish reasonable uses. And here we are. Is this a reasonable use, or is this a reasonable zone for this particular property? And that's, unfortunately, I had concluded last time and conclude now that it is. Right off the changing character, well, it's in, it's part of the changing character of that whole area. But unfortunately, the city has not, now, they do buy industrial parks, but we do not put private property together to offer to developments. It's under Alabama, the way Alabama operates, private landowners do most of that. And that's what's happening here, is that the economy- The location, the intensity of use demands happening in this area, it's changing.
Kind of to follow up on that. I think that, you know, I don't think it's part of the purview of us to try to look and determine, you know, the value of individual, individuals' properties as far as, you know, what would happen if this zone changed and things like that. But I think it is under our purview to look at the safety aspect. I think several have brought up the increased traffic and things like that. But on the other hand, you have this particular piece of land being rezoned to CDD, I mean, it does fall into the future land use designation, I mean, kind of like the whole point of it was to, you know, have more development in this area when that was actually passed, you know, three years ago. So, but I do want to ask Allison, is there a trigger for like another traffic study or some kind of, something to look at, you know, the traffic patterns and things like that in this area? Or-
Don't you anticipate this to grow, I mean, the Cox Road to be widened over time? And, because, you know, there, somebody mentioned that, well, why don't you have a plan? Well, this is the result of a plan. This was planned out very carefully over quite a bit of time, and we're seeing the very beginnings of the growth and the development and all that sort of thing, and it's painful. But the question still remains, I mean, over time, Cox Road's going to be expanded, widened, I'm sure, because of all the traffic that's going to be generated with all the new development.
Yes, we have a plan. We're looking at widening Cox Road, got a tenure projection. We think a two-year roadway will handle the tenure projections right now. We will continue to evaluate the accident data that we have, but just associating with the zoning, which we don't require traffic, we do have a note about traffic on the conditional use portion of it, but we do look at traffic when the planning department looks at the area studies.
And I think it's important to note, when we talk about, when we have, the city has a plan, you got up and spoke and said if the city would put together someone to come and buy this land altogether. When y'all are talking about, we have a plan, it's not, you're determining what industries you want to move out there, it's a proactive plan based on what you see the growth in the private sector is going to be for the future, not a plan the city has in place to encourage and reach out to people to come in and buy people's properties, because that's not what happens.
It's somewhat dynamic, too.
So I just think it's important to make, it's a subtle distinction, but I think with the growth that we've experienced recently, it's very important to make and understand that distinction.
Okay. Have a motion or more comments?
I move that PL 2019 38 Cox Road rezoning from rural to comprehensive be recommended to city council for approval from rural to CDD.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and let's have a voice vote on that if we don't mind.
Wayne Bledsoe?
Yes, aye.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Phil Chancy?
Yes.
Hannah Jager?
Yes.
Matt Blasen?
Yes.
Marcus Marshall?
Yes.
Warren McFord?
Yes.
Nynette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Wrighton, Bob?
Yes. That motion carries. On to agenda item number eight, which is the use aspect of this particular property. This is PL 2019 439, ecological installation. It's a recommendation to the city council for a conditional use approval for a commercial support use, which is going to be a warehouse. Mr. Caldwell.
As you mentioned, the subject property remains the same, but I will rehash that the ownership is Green River Real Estate Investment LLC, and it's a 3.18 acre lot. This is the conditional use, and as we mentioned before, the conditional use is for the warehouse component of essentially a mixed-use development that has one user. So there's an office component and a warehouse component. Office is a permitted right in the CDD, for which it requires no additional approvals. The warehouse component of the development does. If ahead to the site plan, you see that the development anticipates consuming a little over half of the property with the office, showroom, and parking in the front, the warehouse located behind that. In this image, north is actually to the right, so if you stood this up on its side, Cox Road would be at the bottom of the page. Staff has various comments, some relevant to the site plan, that an impact, traffic impact study may need to be required, DRT approval is required, and this is Auburn sewer with lochococa water of this property. Staff's available, we, staff recommends approval with the comments in the staff report, and we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Same aerial as before.
Representative, would you please speak? Let me, I'll just mention a couple of things. Now, we're talking about the use. The use, I'll just mention a couple of things. As Tyler mentioned, there's the two residences that are immediately adjoining are on this, sort of this right side of the page and the upside of, the top side of the page. So what we've done is we've tried to move the site away from those residences. If you noted in your staff report, both of those residences require a 20-foot minimum buffer and a type III structure. What we're planning on doing is putting in a landscape berm with a fence on top of that and evergreen shrubs. So we realize this is a conditional use, and we try to anticipate some conditions that you guys would probably place on this thing. This particular business is an owner-operated, it's a contractor's warehouse and office. You know, if you look at Mall Boulevard, it's going to be similar to that. If you look at something like Ferguson, they're a pipe supplier, so they've got a bunch of pipe stored outside on their property. This is, everything's stored in the warehouse. There are some loading docks. The loading dock side of that site plan is lower. All of this area drains, all of the contouring is draining across the site down to this, that's a stream in that sort of southern end of the site. So we tried to put those loading docks on the downhill side of the site, and also to where trucks would enter, there would be the berm and the fence on top of the berm, and then trucks would sort of back in to the warehouse portion, which is the furthest away from the neighbor to the north. And we tried to get it as far away from the neighbor to the west as we could, that's probably a 40-foot buffer that you're looking out there when 20's required. So wanted to just mention a couple of things before the public hearing, and be happy to answer any questions. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
What sort of hours of operation would he be operating?
Thank you for, I should have mentioned that. This is, I mean, it's a contractor, so it's seven to five. I mean, it's, this is not, it's not an industrial support use where you may have like two 12-hour shifts or three 8-hour shifts, there's, they're not going to be here at 10 o'clock in the night.
Trucks will not, will not be coming and going after 5:00.
No, those trucks will deliver product, but they're not going to be delivering, they're not going to be there Saturday at 5:00 in the afternoon, and it's all day Sunday. I mean, it's not a 24/7, it's not an industry by any stretch. So it's a seven-to-five contractor's office, six to five.
Lighting, is it opposed to?
Well, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but I mean, it'll, you know, we'll have to light it for safety, but, I mean, we've got lighting standards that we're going to have to meet, but if that's a condition you would like to add, we're, you know, we understand the neighbors' concerns, for sure.
The warehouse, is it simply for storage? I'm not familiar enough with his business to know what the process is. Is it simply for storage? There won't be any manufacturing of any type of product-
No.
-in the warehouse? It's simply delivery, storage, and then-
Delivery and storage, and, I mean, there'll be, I'm sure there'll be some pickup trucks-
Bound on smaller trucks to go to jobs.
Right, I'm sure there'll be some pickup trucks and stuff, and- Are you familiar with any of the, we did talk a little bit about this hazardous material sort of aspect of it. If it's just material, I mean, that's just, they're not doing a manufacturing process here. Right. So if it's insulation, that's, you know, there's certain mitigations that'll take care of that. Is it really classified as hazardous material? Well, one, I don't think it can be, based on, if there's, if we can't have that in the CDD, David could not be here tonight, but, so, oh, you are here.
They're not, they're not considered hazardous materials, like the 18-wheelers and stick ring don't have to have special hazmat certification.
Okay, all right. Okay, I'll-
Yeah, I got, so, I mean, I just don't know enough about chemicals, so, it's not hazardous, I mean, isn't there like standards, like hazardous, corrosive, isn't there like a whole bunch of different things? So hazardous, hazardous, the worst, worst that it could possibly be, and is there something under that? Is that what this is, or where does this fall in the spectrum?
I would have to get you on the MSBS, she's to tell you exactly what the difference is. Certainly chemicals, you know, you wouldn't want to get out of our warehouse or out of your truck, so they're stored in drums simply there, load it home to trucks, I mean, you can do that.
Are they considered flammable or explosive?
Well, flammable, but not explosive.
Is this a spray, is it a spray foam product?
It is.
Okay, okay.
Eight components.
Which I guess is mixed on site as you're spraying? Okay.
Okay, all right, well, let's have a public hearing. So, anybody like to come forward and speak on this subject? Come on. And we've got the hazardous material part. Okay.
That's my apologies, Captain.
That's okay, don't, it's all right.
Yeah, the materials, and I had to do a good bit of research to understand exactly what's in these materials. Basically, they'll have 55-gallon drums, these materials. I mean, this is a lot of storage they're going to be doing. It has to be precisely kept at safe temperatures, used in like 15 and 75 degrees. If it gets beyond that, it will start to, what they call polymerize. If it does that, if it gets loose, it could start off gassing. And if the gas gets in the air, it's very, very toxic, it's very, very dangerous. None of us wants that, of course, and I know what he says is probably true, that the trucks do bring it in the sealed drums, and hey, that's safe, okay. But what about a fire in the place itself? We don't know. But to the effects of this material, it is so toxic that even like one little tiny little bit, one tenth of a millimeter per cubic meter, one milligram per cubic meter is enough to cause problems. And we're talking asthma at first. Let me ask you just a quick question. Have any of y'all had an asthma attack before? I have. It is very scary. You're trying to breathe, and it's not happy. This can cause permanent asthma, where if you get just a small amount of exposure to it, and you have already been exposed and not know it, I may have already been exposed. Anytime you go into a building that uses spray foam insulation, there's the potential for exposure. And this is a lot of that chemical. And if you get exposed to it a second time, the effects are very dangerous, they can kill you. I've got the evidence I've already presented before you, I've got more, I've just barely touched on it. There are people who have had their houses sprayed, this material where it was not properly ventilated, and they had severe medical issues. One fellow described, he had his throat closed up on him, he couldn't breathe. The studies I've seen say that this material will off gas even just in regular installations. They have to wait a long time for this stuff to clear for the people to come back. And it will leak over time. Now, to the specific thing of the warehouse, yes, it will be stored, I'm sure, in a safe environment. They'll probably have to use special inert gases to keep it, you know, nice inside the warehouse. But they gotta take it out sometime. It's got to be on the trucks. Accidents can happen, we're human. It could be dropped, it could be punctured. They're going onto a busy street, there can be accidents. I've seen T-bones happen. I've been T-boned myself, not one mile away from there. It happens, you know, we're human, problems happen. But what I want you to understand is just one exposure to this stuff is going to cause serious health issues. And my fault, your fault, nobody's fault, you know, you're going to have people that can be very, very damaged by this, especially children. Children have larger lung capacities. If the off-gassing happens where they are, that berm is not going to stop it, the fencing's not going to stop it. And it just, it's the smallest amount to cause this to happen. And so I'd like you to think about that in terms of the safety of the residents when it comes to this chemical. I cannot overemphasize how dangerous it is if it gets out. And I'm sure they'll tell you it won't get out, and they may be right. But should we have to be subjected to that? Should we have that hanging over our heads like a sword of Damocles? Please. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you much.
And I will go ahead and sign in.
Okay, next. Come on.
Again, I'm Olivia. I live at 2060 Fieldview Drive. My concern for this specific business is our family's safety, our children's safety. If you look this up on the EPA.gov website, it says it is proven to cause cancer. Not it might, it 100% does. It causes severe irreversible asthma and other life-threatening lung diseases. This is on the government website, so I'm not just like, I think this does this. It 100% does, and I don't know, I want to ask you each, did you get a chance to read my email?
Yes.
Everybody? Okay. I won't read the whole thing, but I do want to just touch on a point and say that we travel every week to Birmingham to see an immunologist there for my son to get specialized treatments. He cannot be around these chemicals. If he's exposed to a trace amount of one of these fumes, I talked to our immunologist on Wednesday, he can die. And that is not an exaggeration. I'm sorry.
Take time.
Just, you know, if you search on the EPA website, EPA.gov, you will find, look up any of the chemicals listed, you will see the effects that it has on children. And I have two, I have a three-year-old and a two-year-old, one of which has a compromised immune system. I mean, we will be forced from our home if this passes. We will have to move. And so, I'm good, thank you. Specifically, his business would be touching yards with six kids with developing immune systems, developing lungs. I already told you about the, my opposition to the 18-wheelers in and out of a blessed all, so I won't mention that again. But our family cannot be around this ever. And I know he said that the, you know, the truck drivers don't wear the hazmat suits, but if this building has a fire, there was a year ago, a dump truck flipped over coming out of the industrial park right there. You know, it happens, and if, I can't risk my baby. I mean, it's too dangerous, and there's designated spaces in Auburn that aren't backed up to a family's yard. You know, I get that this is a great spot for development, I totally understand that. But for this specific business to have these specific type of chemicals, I can't say I'm for that. And again, I wanted to make the point that when I asked David, when we met with him, if he, what he would do, and he said, "I would sell and move away from this," he won't live beside it. He knows it's not safe to live beside, that was his own response to me. And so that tells me it's probably not the safest choice. Anyways, the property value, financial value, not, oh, I love living here, which I do, but I'm talking about financial value, would decrease. So we would have to take a financial loss to move, because it's not like, come buy our house. Look at this lovely plant in your backyard. That's beautiful, it's a great scenery. And so lastly, I just want to close with, the people that you've heard speak tonight are people of integrity. We value honesty and truthfulness, and we teach our children the same. I cannot in good conscience put my home for sale with this warehouse in the backyard, knowing another family would be at the same risk, even if you don't have a son with an overactive immune system that has to go to a specialist every week out of town. You still, accidents happen. The building could catch on fire. And you know what? You have almost a 100% chance of getting cancer. I mean, I urge you to look at the government website on this. The block of land needs to, I feel like, either all stay residential or be developed at once so that no one is at risk financially or health-wise. It's just not fair to cause the demise of the surrounding families for the benefit of one. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Again, my name is Lula Wigammarable. Do you need all of that? Okay. I speak again in opposition to this request. I have a couple of questions if I could get. I'm not exactly sure what the ecological insulation is. Can someone explain what that?
Yeah, we're going to have the representative have a little talk with us here in a minute. So we'll ask him, that being one, that'll be one thing he can address. So go ahead and ask your questions, and then when the public hearing is over, I'll have him come up and answer the question.
Okay, okay, because that's important to me. The other question I have has to do with the recommendation to the city council for conditional use. What does that mean?
Well, the use of a warehouse, specifically the use of that warehouse in this zoning is called a conditional use. And so we have to address it at the planning commission, and so we put certain conditions on it. The office itself is permitted by right, so he could just build that office, and he wouldn't even have to ask the planning commission about it. But the way our laws and ordinances are written, this particular use, which is the warehouse itself, to be able to use it in CDD, which is this zoning area, has to go through an extra approval process. And that's what we're addressing right now. So it's just part of the way we approve these development projects.
Okay. The final comment I guess I would make has to do with the possible health issues that could occur. And I don't know exactly what would occur, but it is expected, or at least believed, that certain types of insulation are carcinogenic, cause cancer. And I have worked in the healthcare field for over 40 years. And unfortunately, I have worked in buildings and known people who worked in buildings, who, because of their association in these buildings and working in these buildings, there was a very high incidence of cancer among the people who worked in and around. And you probably have heard of asbestos. I'm sure all of us have heard of asbestos. And unfortunately, over the years, years ago, buildings were built and people didn't know what they were building and what was being put in the buildings. Now, we have an opportunity to know ahead of time what is going to be built and what's going to be in this building. And as Maya Angelo once said, "When we know better, we should do better." So those are my comments.
Okay, next. Anybody else?
I still live in the same place.
Okay, you're still the same guy, too?
You're the same guy. I'm back here scratching my head. I want to try to articulate a way.
Though, can you do say your name, I'm sorry?
Clay Langford.
Yeah, we just need the record, on the record.
I forgot my name, tell you. I'm trying to figure out a way to articulate the common sense aspect of this process to you guys. I look at Green River Real Estate Company. What does that sound like to you guys? Green River Real Estate. Does that sound like an ecological company?
On its face, you'd have to ask more questions.
Okay, uh, it sounds to me like a real estate investment company. And if this commission is going to look at progress and let these guys take a unilateral approach, if we're going to let these guys come in here and buy residential property and turn it to commercial, which effectively will decrease our property value. The gentleman here spoke to the prospect of fiscally and financially, property values increasing generally when you have commercial property, true. But what happens when you put that commercial property next to ours? What is it going to do from a residential standpoint? It's going to drive our prices down. That's a fact. Now, I have no doubt that guaranteed, if my property was left alone residentially, it would continue to increase. I have almost five acres. Got deer in my backyard, love it. Again, none of us are oblivious to the fact that change is coming, but you guys have got to look at this, you know, from a human aspect. Is it fair to let these guys unilaterally do this and then damage us? If it is, then their rights are more important than ours. And I just don't think, I don't think this panel thinks that way. I appreciate your consideration.
What else?
Adam, Adam Ficken, 2060 Fieldview Drive, one more time. Yeah, so I don't have much more to say. You've heard a lot about how I feel about it. I agree with Clay. I can't in good faith support any decision that would allow one party to benefit at the expense of three very good families and one widow. I just, I don't see that as being right. And what I'm about to say, take it or leave it for what it's worth. Right now at exit 57, there's CDD property right there off Championship Boulevard, backs up to the White Oak subdivision. This business could go right there. I can imagine the pushback, the anger, the outrage from the residents of White Oak who would butt up to that. As I said earlier, I recognize that our property is strategic to the plan. We want to work with that. But back to my analogy with the White Oak subdivision, we're no less regative citizen, and our homes are no less valuable to us than they are to those people. So if you allow a business to come in here, tear down what we love, I just can't agree with that. And the other thing I'll say is, I believe you all to be sound businessmen and women. When I stand here and say, "We collectively want to work with the city," and I know it's not for you to make deals, but if I were you, I would want to do what's best for the city, because you're the city leadership. And if we can do something that is better than one small business consuming the centerpiece, why not do that? Thank you for your time.
Anybody else? Alright, well, I'm going to close the public hearing. Questions or comments? Oh, actually, I would like to have the representative come forward. Can you at least come forward and tell us about the process? I've got a couple of questions in addition to that. So I guess the first thing would be, so what do you do?
Please forgive my appearance.
That's okay.
Straight from work.
No problem.
We're an installation contractor. We insulate residential, commercial, industrial properties all over the state of Alabama, North Carolina. We have three offices, Franklin, North Carolina, Birmingham, Alabama, and here. And so we, a large portion of our work is residential construction, but a large portion of it is also commercial construction.
And so what's the basic process?
So, well, what we're asking for here with 12,000 square feet of warehouses, not for 12,000 square feet of chemical storage, the vast majority, approximately 10,000 square feet of that warehouse would be simply for battened-blown insulation. Insulation has a lot of air, and it's, we have to have just a lot of storage. It takes up a lot of space. We have to have warehouse space. So we actually only have one little small space where we actually store the chemicals, and it's in a heated and cooled room. And we take proper precautions to make sure that we have.
Some industry standard and safety that goes along with that, OSHA sort of things, okay?
Correct.
What I, that was a question I had, is that does EPA or ADM have any regulatory authority over what you do, what you use?
No, sir, they do not.
When they get a business permit there, doesn't somebody from the fire department inspect that and make sure if there are any hazardous materials, that's, what's that process, how does that work a little bit?
Yeah, our fire department, they conduct annual inspections of businesses for fire code requirement purposes.
Furthermore, when the property were to go through a development review team, a review of the engineering and architectural plans, they'll need to know what's being stored in there, what's the fire rating of the wall, et cetera, as far as the construction of the property.
So there is some review process?
No doubt. We, let them build it, we know what's going in it and how it's being constructed.
Okay, so this was not submitted to them for review?
This, as far as the city knows, this is the only thing that exists as far as this development, right? There have been no plans submitted otherwise?
Meaning, I'm not sure I understood what you just said.
Talking about the architectural plans, the room where the chemicals are held, how that would be reviewed.
Oh, okay, so that goes to the.
The construction plans, they haven't gone through the DRT and building review process as of yet.
Appropriately, they're at the first step getting a use approval.
Is that where we get to the, because I don't feel like we got an answer for the table permitted uses talking about for CDD. With the, so chemicals are allowed and not allowed? And if, would all that be in the DRT process, would that be, is that when you guys would look at that?
Yeah, the, all I, the. Jay Ran, we have a cross-reference document that we use for basically coding uses. And this is, the code that's referenced here is other. is other warehousing and storage. And examples that it provides is lumber storage terminals, bulk petroleum storage, whiskey warehousing. So it's, I mean, I can't give you a, I can't give you a black and white answer. What I can give you is a, is kind of a subjective answer in that we do have companies all over the city that operate in CDD-zoned areas that do have a certain chemical component. We've got pest control companies, for example. You have chemicals associated with dry cleaning that goes on in CDD zones. So it's really a matter of, the table of permitted uses is designed primarily to get to what is the, what is the primary use of whatever's going at that location, recognizing that there are going to be incidental materials that may constitute, in other words, you've got to look at this, is the primary, is the primary use chemical storage? And I don't think that it is based on what's being described to me.
No, but we are responsible for making a decision on compatibility of a particular use, which uses these particular chemicals, which I know nothing about. And if we make this decision tonight, then we're depending upon the technicians then to answer the question about the safety. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
During the DRT?
During the DRT. My problem, I'm a little uncomfortable with reviewing that in the fact that compatibility, this is like cleaners. They're in certain commercial districts. All those that I know of that use chemicals are not necessarily adjacent to single-family houses. Now, I do believe this is a commercial zone and we made the right zoning decision. But I think that we need to carefully talk about this and get, for me, more information. Because what I heard was compelling and confusing to me because I'm not aware, don't have the knowledge for it. I don't know about the rest of you.
I feel the same way. The information, is there some way that maybe we could have, you know, the DRT gets presented with this kind of information as part of their process? So is there any way we can get out in front of that and get the same information for us to help us make this decision? Because to me, the safety aspect...
I mean, we can certainly get with our, at least as far as the city side's concerned, I mean, this is a, it's a spray insulation application, which means it goes in people's homes.
Right.
So we've got folks on our staff that I'm sure can provide some insight and we can get some additional information from the proprietor as well, if that's something that would meet the pleasure of the commission. We can certainly do that. If you're inclined to postpone consideration of the item until you can be provided with more information and facts, that's certainly within the purview of the commission to request that.
Okay, before we consider that, though, I do have one other question for the applicant. Talk to me a little bit about the ingress and egress of this, on this property. Is there any kind of requirement, you know, in terms of having some sort of entry? Okay, I'm sorry, I guess I missed that. There are deceleration lanes going to be required? So you're going to build, you're going to build that into this?
Yeah, we're going to have to because this is an arterial. So we'll have to have, we'll have to have turn lanes. Yep. And that's the, that's the single driveway that you're seeing right there at the bottom of the page. So that is Cox Road right there.
Okay. Sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move it. I have a couple more questions. One is, Water Resource Management said that it will be Water Services of Low Chopoca Water Authority. Do they have the flow rate, the pressure necessary? Should you have, you know, chemical fire? Anything like that?
That'll be determined during the DRT process.
Okay.
See, some of these, yeah, so that's important information to have to make this decision, in my view.
And the other question I have is that you say it may or may not, you know, attach to our, connect to our sewer system, or they may use a private onsite sewage system?
That's correct. That's again, that's addressed in the DRT process. We don't know, we have not seen sewage and dead sewage. But there is sewer across the street now available.
We also have to consider that the, I mean, even if we all think that this is going to be a commercial area, that doesn't mean that this particular use has to be the first thing there, especially if we're talking about chemicals and what. I mean, I am of the opinion also that we just don't know enough about what is being stored, you know, in this particular use. I mean, if we get some more information and things like that, maybe we could have a more informed decision. But just, you know...
Okay. Final comments from you guys and then we'll deliberate?
Just to answer that question on water, it's Low Chopoca's service area. Auburn Water is also right there. So if for some reason, Low Chopoca's water's way better than it used to be because they've done some large main expansions, so they can fight fires that they used to not be able to fight. But if for some reason they couldn't, and that's what Eric was saying, that they'll, you know, it'll be negotiated to turn it over to that little service area. So they, those two water boards deal with each other all the time. So, but we, yes, it's fine if we would, we're okay tabling this for a future?
Postpone it.
Okay, is that the new word?
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
It is. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so let's, I'm sorry, ma'am, I've closed the public hearing. So we're going to go ahead and deliberate on this.
I'm speaking as a public, private citizen.
Well, but I've closed, I've closed the public hearing, so I can't take your comments now. We've already, we're moving along, okay?
Question, not a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Does the city plan to do anything about the traffic?
Okay, we're, I'm sorry, that's not an issue that we're going to, we've already discussed that issue and we've said...
I'm talking about turning signals.
We've already discussed that issue, ma'am. Can you please have a seat? We need to move along, yes. We, the discussion that we had was with a city engineer that as the traffic builds in this area, they do traffic studies and they accommodate that. They put lights in, they widen the road, they do whatever it takes to accommodate that. So we have had that discussion.
That's what I'm looking at here.
Okay, thank you. All right, so moving right along, do we have a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I move to postpone Item 8 until our regularly scheduled meeting in October.
That'll be the 10th, October 10th.
October 10th.
And to get additional, more specific detailed information on the hazardous materials and answers to the other questions that were raised in the public hearing.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. We'll postpone that decision until October 10th. Okay, we're on to Agenda Item Number 9, 2019-440, Sanford Village Plan Development District PDD Amendment. Mr. Howell, well, here, hang on one sec. Let's allow people to clear out for a minute. That's okay. That's okay. Okay.
All right, the next case is a PDD amendment rezoning case. The applicant is requesting to amend ordinance number 3146 that approved the Sanford Village PDD, which consists of approximately 30.62 acres, located at the southwestern corner of East Sanford Avenue and East Glean Avenue. As you call, the PDD application was before you in January and was approved in February by the city council for this, for this PDD. The applicant is requesting to change that original development, which, this is the first, this is the initial master development plan. They are wishing to develop approximately 4.01 acres, currently undeveloped, and as an assisted living facility with 65 units. That particular area is right here, in orange, at the terminus of Sanford Village Court. And this particular, that proposal takes up about 40% of that Phase 1 area. As a, as an assisted living facility, does include units for residents. However, there is no green space, additional green space requirements. The PDD's green space, open space requirement is fulfilled with the approximately three acres that were associated with multifamily development immediately to the, nearly to the east of this. I've received no correspondence in favor or against of this.
All right, thank you. Is there a representative that would like to come speak about this?
West Thrust, Four-Side Group, VIPA.
Okay, good. All right, well, this requires a public hearing. Anybody would like to come forward and talk about this modification to the PDD amendment? Please come forward. No one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments. Motion from the commission?
Move to approve 2019-440.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number 10 is 2019-441, which is related to the same piece of property. And in this case, it's for the conditional use approval of an assisted living facility in the Sanford Village Plan Development District and also includes a buffer yard waiver. Mr. Howell?
Yes, sir. Because as you said, this is the conditional use associated with the previous amendment. The waiver requested is, seeking a waiver table 4-6, which is the buffer width requirements for adjacent vacant land by zoning district. It reduces the buffer width requirement between use and, between uses of this intensity and vacant land in the CDD zoning district from 10 feet to 5 feet. And I'll get to that here in a minute. The, this is the site, the development site is proposed and the requested zoning, or excuse me, the requested waiver buffer, buffer waiver is right here along the northern section of that, of the development site. And it's to accommodate the, accommodate the parking for the, for the use itself. And also, as you can see, that vacant land currently, although it is undeveloped, is within the, is within the same PDD. All right, I'll point out also that the development is within the airport's noise zone and underneath the 50-foot obstruction height. It's well underneath the obstruction height and the noise zone essentially says that the city provides any developer with recommendations for how to mitigate that noise. And again, the arrow. Any of you have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Again, no correspondence.
So this will require a public hearing as well. So would anybody like to come forward and talk about this conditional use? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number 10 without staff comments.
Second. Motion in the second. All those in favor, say aye.
On the end.
Excuse me, sorry about, discussion first before the vote.
Oh, sorry.
My question is, are we going to separate the waiver out or will it be approved with or without conditions?
If you, you can include, if you're inclined to approve the waiver, you can include it in with your motion. But do you approve the conditional use?
And that's the motion ahead, before us now, is that it's included?
Correct. Are the two properties vacant that, that buffer that they're trying to decrease?
Sorry, can you say the question one more time?
They're both still vacant, the properties that abut the 5 foot.
They are currently undeveloped, this, all right.
Discussion? Okay, I have a motion.
Sorry. The staff is okay with reducing that buffer yard? I had a little confusion about it.
And yes, I think I left that part out. Yes, the staff recommends approval of the waiver request.
Yep. This reminds me a lot of Central Park where we, even though the parcels are vacant, we have a fair degree of certainty of what types of uses will locate there. Because this use is the first one to go in. It's required to put in a 10-foot. If like uses develop there, if there were like uses there, which we anticipate there will be, the assisted living facility will only have to provide a 5-foot. This came up a lot in Central Park when we would have a medical office. The medical office was essentially being punished because it was going into the vacant lot. Once that vacant lot is developed, the requirement would have been diminished. So we're essentially taking somewhat of a calculated risk that it's going to develop with a like use. But in this case, because we've already got a pretty good idea of what's going down that road, we feel pretty confident about it.
Thank you for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second in front of us to approve with staff comments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Now, let me ask for a show of hands. How many of you out there are here for the North Donahue Shug Jordan Residential? Okay, how about if we pull that one forward? I'd like to move that one forward and address that now.
You'll just need to take a motion to take it out of order?
Yeah, can we, can I? Have a motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, so we're going to skip over to Agenda Item Number 18, which is PL 2019-445, North Donahue Shug Jordan Residential. It's the recommendation to the city council for a conditional use approval of a performance residential development. Mr. Howell?
Yes, sir. All right, as you said, performance residential town, in this particular case, it's townhomes. The entire development is taking place within this strip of development district housing that is in between the CDD zone that's associated, that's around the Shug Jordan, North Donahue Drive intersection and Neighborhood Conservation Area is to the, to its west, to its east, associated around Cary Woods. The area highlighted here is the section specifically intended for townhomes and single-family would continue up through here. The areas around it include Owens Road and Cedar Brook Road with two different stub outs that the, that the development does take access to as well as North Donahue Drive. The area immediately west around, or excuse me, directly on the intersection is the Walmart, Neighborhood Walmart grocery store that was built a couple of years ago. The development site's approximately 24 and 1/2 acres and is entirely wooded. In addition to frontage along North Donahue Drive and Shug Jordan Parkway, stub outs, like we mentioned earlier, from Owens Road and Cedar Brook Drive connect to the east in the Cary Woods subdivision. There's also a 50-foot Alabama power easement that runs along the length of the subject property's eastern boundary. So this area directly in between the lots, as you see here, and the adjoining neighborhood.
Which would be used as open space, right? I mean, part of the requirement?
They would not be able to build anything in there. And yes, they are including that. You can include buffer, buffer yard in as part, on top of your, or open space on top of your buffer yard. All right, so the future land use map designates this property as master plan mixed use. And so that includes the area immediately to the west, which includes these sections, not part of the development, and also the Walmart. And so while this does not provide a PDD, the development plan does include all sections of the residential portion and can't, cannot include the Walmart, which is already developed. All right, so as you can see, you have the townhomes down here in the south can, making connection off of Donahue, North Donahue Drive and connecting through into Owens. Includes 21 townhome units. Moving up further, you can, you can see that the single-family residences that would extend beyond it, separating it from further single-family development on the opposite side of this wetland area right here, which takes, takes access off of Cedar Road. Total single-family performance homes include, are 40 and that is between both, both sections of the, both sections of the development. Proposed densities of the development are net 5.5 dwelling units an acre Proposed densities of the development are net 5.5 dwelling units an acre for the townhouse section, which meets, which is right at the, uh, which is right at the, the limit for DDH. However, as an entire, taking a gross density for the entire development, that drops that density down to two, two and a half dwelling units an acre. Area in shaded dark gray are, or is the required open space that is a component of performance residential developments. As such, that becomes no longer developable and is to remain in perpetuity. Staff worked with the developer to, uh, to find a, a, a site layout that would satisfy the city's subdivision regulation, uh, requiring subdivisions to take access from adjoining, adjoining subdivisions where, where accessible and where possible. All right, make sure I cover everything. I have received personally, and the staff has received, uh, two correspondents, one from the, one gentleman from the front desk and then another from the, another phone call, both in opposition to primarily the connectivity aspect of the, of it. However, there was some concern about just general development, any period. But the, the focus of their comments was primarily around the connectivity. I'm certain that, I know that there has been other correspondence with council members and whatnot, but that's not been shared with the staff.
Okay.
Any of your questions?
Representative like to speak? I don't know if I see him anymore.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah, sure.
You talked about the requirement, the city requirement about connectivity to adjoining.
Yes.
Elaborate a little bit more.
Yes, yes, ma'am. The City of Auburn subdivision regulation requires any new subdivision to take act, connect to any streets that are in adjacent subdivisions where those are possible. In this particular case, you have two stubout, two stubout roads from an adjoining, uh, from an adjoining neighborhood, which is intended to connect with subdivisions adjacent to them at the time that they were, at the time that they were developed. We also promote, we also promote connectivity through, um, connecting through additional road networks in order to alleviate sections of the, in order to alleviate traffic throughout sections of the road, or sections of town. In this particular area, you end up with, um, so it's a little off map here, so I'm going to use the vicinity map. This area right here only includes two different, only includes two connections much further south to the, to North Donahue, for the, for this entire development. The same, that same lowest sec, that same lowest access point is the, is the first of eight connections moving east along North College. So that disparity there is something that we'd also like to try and remedy.
Representative like to say anything about this?
Good afternoon, Wes Thrash, Forside Group. Um, I did want to talk to, about the connectivity a little bit. As you mentioned, we did work with the city on that connectivity. Our original plan did not show a connection to Owens Road. It showed just a, a single connection out to Donahue for the, the townhome portion of the development. That was our original plan. The developer doesn't really have a preference either way, whether that connects to Owens Road or is separated as was originally drawn. So that may be some of the comments we get, so I just, I wanted to go ahead and mention that. We would like to also request removal of some of the staff comments for rear-loaded garages for townhomes recommended and rear access to the townhomes recommended under both planning and engineering. We are, we already have lot frontages on, on two sides for the, for the townhomes. We feel that that comment is, it's more subjective, it's a staff preference more so than it's not a code, a code requirement. We feel that it also creates additional impervious surface ratio, um, issues where we're adding additional pavement that we don't feel like is necessary and also reducing the amount of open space that we're providing. As a personal side note, I, I disagree with rear entry garages for townhomes because of safety concerns. When I was younger, um, I lived in a townhome that had rear entry access, had a main drive down the middle and had looped roads for rear entry. And what came of that is during the day when people were at work, you had individuals using those rear entry roads pulling around where they're out of view from public sight. And it become an issue where you were having break-ins to those, those homes. So that is, on a personal side, to me, I think it's a safety concern to have rear entry.
Okay. And then, again, real quick on the, uh, the, uh, the access, you still, Cedar Brook is, is a requirement because it's the only one-way in, one-way out, right? And it's, you were speaking of the connection only to Owens Road.
Yes.
That, that you could go either way on that, but you have to have Donahue to get in and out of that, that'd be the single in and out egress.
Correct. Now, this is conditional use for the townhome portion only. Single-family is allowed by right based on the zoning. And the developer wanted to have a buffer between Donahue and their single-family. That's why they wanted the townhome. So really what we're looking at is, is a townhome use compatible with the adjacent developments in the area? And, and we think it's in line. I think there's, you know, there's townhomes on the opposite of North Donahue and on the opposite of, of Green Tree there.
Okay.
Question for, I guess, Forrest, because in the, uh, if, 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 if the word recommended is used, used, the advocate's not going to be punished in any way if he decides not to do that.
That's correct. We, we've talked internally about the prospects of requiring rearload access, many jurisdictions do, we do not. So it is true that that is not a code requirement. Mr. Thrash is exactly correct.
Now, is...
But I think an anecdotal evidence of it being unsafe is not really strong. I said anecdotal evidence is not really strong.
Okay, so, um...
Question, a comment? I'd like to correct one information. The lot layout, this is the second lot layout, which provides more open space than the original design.
Was the original design a, uh, rear, was it rearload or not? Just out of curiosity.
No, I think my comment was that if we add additional impervious in the rear for rear access, then we would be reducing the, the amount of open space.
Yeah. Okay, this, uh, any more questions from the commission? I'll open the public hearing. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on this. Anybody that'd like to come forward and speak, please do. Please give us your name and address and sign in when you're done. Don't everybody come at once.
Good evening, I'm Stuart Price. I live at 613 Owens Road. I'm on the dead end across from Gary and Brenda Cantini too, so we're the two end homes on Owens. And my, um, strong concern again is having Owens extend through to Donahue. I was broken into four times. The police speculate that the break-ins were due to the fact that the burglars were using, uh, Donahue through Green Tree Terrace and then the power company, um, right away to get down to the house and using that power company right away to get back out to Green Tree on the Donahue as an, as an escape route. Burglars finally stopped when the power company installed a gate at the dead end of Owens, which is still there, preventing egress of the burglars, leaving only the outage all the way over at Shug Jordan to get out of Owens Road. If you extend Owens Road then now, you tear that gate down and you open it up onto Donahue, you essentially provide the burglars easy access once again to the neighborhood and to the homes along Owens Road. I don't think increasing crime in Auburn, in our Auburn neighborhoods really should ever be an end result of city planning. And I'm very much opposed to extending Owens to Donahue. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody that'd like to speak? I assume you agree?
Well, other reasons.
Okay, good.
My name's Gary, Gary Cantini. I live at 6A at Owens Road. As Stuart said, I live across the street from him on the dead end. One, I have issues with security. Well, I did have been broken into several years ago also, and the police theorized the same type of egress and exit there. And it's a matter of, happened when I was out of town on the conference for, for city business, which did not make matters any better. But my concern goes beyond just that. It's the amount of traffic that we will see on that stretch of Owens Road that crosses Jenkins. I don't care how you do this, if it connects through Donahue, you will see a significant increase in traffic. The other, some of the other concerns I have, and I met with, uh, Mr. Howell the other day and discussed some of his issues and some of the stuff, I can understand some of the things, but one of the things I'd like to see, I'm not necessarily against the townhouses per se, but I've been there 25 years and when I moved in, I knew there was growth. I actually had come across one or two city maps at the time that actually showed Shug Jordan, uh, Owens Road, oops, excuse me, you took, basically completing the horseshoe back down to Shug Jordan. So if we were to develop this, and this had, Owens Road would continue back down to Shug Jordan with no connection to Donahue, especially if it was all residential going through, that would make sense. Even if this were to go with the townhouses with no connection to Donahue, it would be, at least be a more palatable situation. The, the other issue I see coming further down here was this, not the conditional use area here, but the whole development is, being at one time, obviously, the planning commission, the city council must have had plans for that to continue or the map would have never been drawn. I don't quite understand why they, developer cannot put a bridge over that stream there and take Owens all the way back down to Shug Jordan then. If we're looking at making connections, it seems like connecting to Shug Jordan for that area off of Cedar Brook would make much more sense. It would give you two ways in and out, not just one. Beyond the connectivity issues, right now, I have, if you look on the, the side map there, if you look at, I'm on the, the, it'd be the northwest corner of Owens and Jenkins there. We have a diagonal ease, water easement that runs across the property from in front of Mr. Price's house, diagonally across the road, another culvert there that runs across ours. Currently, when we have even a, what I'd call a medium range, not a heavy rain, we get, you can see the, all the, uh, clay coming up off the power company easement, running down Owens Road, hitting that culvert, and then I have a stream across my yard. Several years ago, when they were doing GPS mapping of manhole covers and everything, a crew came out, mapped the manhole cover on my side, lifted it off to look for depth. Turns out there was less than probably six to eight inches between clay and the top of the concrete. They came out at one point, dug that out, dug maybe four foot into the yard. So now basically, yeah, it's got some flow room, but now we basically have a pole until it overflows, then it runs everywhere down the street. Looking at that development here, I see that this townhouse section of the development seems to be on even higher ground than the power company easement. So I'm concerned about water runoff from that. Are we going to see major runoff from that and make our water problems already worse? So like I said, I, it's, I have several issues, whether it's a safety with the connection to Donahue, whether it's the increased traffic here, whether there's water runoff, connectivity. Like I said, I think being there, weather map at one point showed the horseshoe going back down with no connectivity to, um, Donahue. I think that would be the best use of that property. Like I said, again, I'm not necessarily opposed to the townhouses, but if we could loop that through all the way back down to Shug Jordan without the connection to Donahue, that makes more sense. Or if we're going to keep that layout, it would make more sense to connect to Donahue and not to Owens because that totally changes the character of our neighborhood. And under that one section of your thing, talking about, will be no impact in the character, traffic, other things in the neighborhood, I do believe this would seriously adjust the character of the neighborhood. I don't know what conditions you may or may not put on this property, either the whole way down or anything as far as whether there'd be any kind of foliage, whether there'd be any kind of fencing. I know when the Walmart development came in, there were some concerns about that, but at least there was a decent-sized buffer fence that went all the way across the back that did mitigate some of the noise of trucks and stuff. But having lived in a townhouse area before, I know townhouses create more trouble with, with traffic and parking. And, uh, to the gentleman who spoke against the rear development, that was one thing that Mr. Howell had mentioned, by requiring the rear access, if you had a sidewalk through there, you wouldn't have to cross seven, eight, 10 driveways or whatever. So there would be more of a pedestrian safety with rear access where he's asking to change it, which would, would do just the opposite of what was suggested by the city.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Will. You can both come. Uh, hold, can you hold on? Let's, I'm going to wait till the public.
Hello, my name...
Next.
...is Kelsey Crum, and I live on 1215 Jenkins Drive, which is the, um, last property of Cedar, North Cedar Brook that dead ends right there. So I just have, uh, two questions for clarification before, um, I make my concerns. Is the connectivity on North Cedar Brook, uh, required connectivity versus the ones on Owens?
I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure how I would address that. It's, it's, it's how they're designing the property.
Yeah, but both, both of those streets basically stubout at the property line, which con, when Cary Woods was designed, that's very typical. When you've got vacant land, uh, you know it's going to be developed and you're looking to maximize the efficiency of your road network.
That was...
So anytime you have a road that just stubs out, uh, you should always anticipate that when the property next to it develops, it will connect to that property. That's why it's called a stubout.
Right, but in the grand...
And it's not called a cul-de-sac.
Right, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, they could conceivably go the other way at a cost, you know, or, or whatever, but that's...
And you've got a pretty significant, yeah, you've got a, kind of a creek crossing here. Um, you know, you're talking about tin, tin rooftops here, I think, that would connect into...
Those are the original intent. Saying required?
Sure. Okay. My next question was, um, concerning the power easements in the property, the barrier that's going to be there. Is there any plan for, like, um, the gentleman was saying before me, any sort of fenced or barrier between those homes and the power easement?
Usually, well, usually not. I mean, unless the developer decides to specifically put...
Yeah, there's not going to be any, if very little buffer requirement, just because you're dealing with like use for the most part. And then, of course, there's restrictions on, you, you can't put any kind of structure in the power easement. That's within the, that's what...
Sure.
Entirely within the purview of the power company.
Okay. Um, thank you for answering those. And I, um, my concerns against it are for the safety and well-being of my family. We actually just moved into that property, uh, about two months ago. This was something that we were completely unaware of when we bought the property.
Are you on the stubout? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The very last property of the stubout. Um, and I am concerned about the safety of that, the heavy traffic. I actually just found out that I'm pregnant and we will be having a baby in March. And one of the reasons why we bought that property is because of the privacy of it and because of, um, the quietness, the character of the neighborhood, the well-established, um, part of the neighborhood and, uh, with the expansion and development of these homes and of these townhomes, um, that character will decrease. We will have, like I said, heavier traffic, increased crime and, uh, you know, worries about security. And I am worried about the value of our property. My husband is a pastor. We moved here for him to pastor students on Auburn University's campus. And the, the, the reason that we bought that property was so that we could host college students for Bible studies in our home and have that privacy without having to, um, worry about disrupting our neighbors. And so, uh, that was a, a very big reason why we, why we purchased that property. And so, um, I am, I cannot support this, uh, for the well-being and the quality of my family and my surrounding neighbors. I know there's, are many, many, um, families with young children on Jenkins Drive right there, and there will be, um, an increase in... of my family and my surrounding neighbors. I know there are many, many families with young children on Jenkins Drive right there, and there will be an increase in, in traffic flow coming in and out of Cary Woods and into that new property. And so I am, I'm against the connectivity of it. I do understand that there is growth, wonderful growth here in Auburn, and we were encouraged by that in moving here from South Carolina. But those are, those are my concerns. Thank you. And I have signed that.
Please. Ma'am? No, I was gonna ask her to come on up.
Hello, I'm Emily Jortner. I live on 778 North Cary Drive, so a little bit in a different part of the neighborhood. I just found out about this this afternoon, sitting with my neighbor who lives on Owens. And what my concern also is with connectivity and with traffic. So we live on a part of Cary Drive where sort of anyone who goes to the neighborhood kind of has to drive past our house. And I think one of my big issues is character. I know there's, you can't really, you can't fight City Hall, right? I mean, if the, if the character is gonna change, it's gonna change. And we welcome new people coming to our neighborhood, and we welcome people coming into different kinds of living situations. What I hope that we can address are these traffic issues. I have a kindergartner and a first grader, and we walk to school every day because we just live right around the corner. And Cary Woods Elementary is expanding. We all know that our school district is, you know, one of the best in the nation, one of the best in the state, and we're trying to do right by our kids. Our neighborhood right now, you can see a lot of new families are moving in with little kids, and we gotta get our kids to school. We've got buses that come in, we've got car lines that come in. We have, like, no sidewalks in our neighborhood. There are no traffic calming measures whatsoever. And we're already having people cutting through right past our house. We have trucks coming by all the time. We have traffic, just people who wanna take a shortcut to get, do their commute a little bit faster. That's already happening. So what I would hope is that there would be some review of traffic in our neighborhood. Maybe if we need to have more sidewalks, maybe we need to have bike lanes on both sides. I don't know.
There is a sidewalk plan that's being built out through the city, so-
Okay.
-it includes Cary Woods.
Well, I hope I'll get a letter about that, maybe cut, cut off some of my old shrubs that I don't need anymore. But, um, but the traffic, traffic calming measures is something that I'm quite concerned about because it's a hilly street, it's a curvy street. Our house is on the top of a hill and, you know, the butt of a curve, and people just, they think they're free and clear to go as fast as they can, and me and my kids are on the other side of it walking home from school. So, and I've called the city before about doing some studies, and they've said that they haven't seen any problem. Well, you're gonna see a problem once, if, if we build more connectivity, and if that's inevitable, then great. Let's make sure that, that we have a safe community, so.
Absolutely.
That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in if you haven't signed in. Okay, thank you. You can sign in afterwards, please.
My name is Carmen Wilder, and I live at 1106 Jenkins Drive. So it's, it's the corner house on Jenkins and Owens. So it's actually one door down from the houses that are adjacent to the property in the dead end on Owens. And I echo all the concerns that have been previously talked about, impossible solutions for it. My family and I actually just moved to Auburn in March for jobs at the university. And one of the big things, like people said before, our big draws to agreeing to come here were the schools and the city, and we see how it's just exploding and developing and expanding. I think that's wonderful and it's exciting. And I also just moved from a college town that's doing that, too. And I have seen what happens when you tell a neighborhood that's well-established. So I previously lived in a neighborhood very similar, not as fancy, but very similar in that being very old and established, close to the university, a lot of great things. I have a 14-month-old, a kindergartner, and a second grader. We ride our bikes to and from school every single day. As our neighbor just said, it is very hilly, it's very windy. There are very few sidewalks. I have to coach them along the way, obviously. And I have, we moved to this neighborhood thinking, wow, isn't it so exciting that we're finally moving to a neighborhood and we have this place and it's very quiet, and I don't have to worry about people cutting through the neighborhood because I can guarantee you that's what's gonna happen. It may not be the intention of opening up Owens and opening up Cedar Brook. People aren't gonna cut through. We need to make sure that, you know, all these roads are finished. But that's exactly what's going to happen because I just lived it. And I can, I can guarantee it's gonna happen. It's very frustrating. Yes, I know that when I bought the property, that when you buy on a dead end, it's eventually gonna get developed. I'm not against the development, per se. I know that's going to happen. But looking carefully about what the development does to the character, the reputation, and the overall health of the city that you live in. And I see a lot of issues here that can be resolved or compromised on in other ways, like redirecting the road to another road if it has to be opened up. If it has to be opened because of safety, having the road blocked where only certain, you know, police or emergency vehicles can open up the road for certain times or emergency situations. I feel like that there's some sort of other alternatives or compromises that we can talk about. So I just wanna say that I echo the concerns of safety, of traffic, of what that does to the neighborhood in Auburn overall. So, and I can guarantee it's gonna happen again. It's very frustrating to find that out. And I did not receive a letter about this. And I think not notifying neighbors about it, only the ones that the property butts up against, I feel is a lie by omission. You know, everybody that, it affects everybody. In fact, it affects the whole city. It does most closely affect people that are in that closest vicinity, but it affects everyone, this change. So I think it's important that people know about it and have, are able to express, people living there know actually what's going on, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Scott, I'm at 1117 Jenkins Drive, which is right next door to the Cantinis. So one door, so I'm just right on the edge. He talked about water. Wanna share something? This is my front yard. I've been there 30 years, and it just gets worse and worse.
Wow. Well, unfortunately, that's not a planning commission issue. That's a, there's other parts that-
But no, we are down, so we're down slope from where you're gonna develop. And so if that's my, and if you swipe it, you'll see my backyard with water running down.
Well, that's, that's a pretty serious issue, but-
Yeah, so that needs to be addressed if you're gonna build there.
Which, which department is involved with that, just out of, is that Public Works? It's just a water runoff issue, pretty, pretty serious.
From the Owens family 30 years ago, and we built on it.
Can you, can you speak into the microphone? Because you're on, you're on record.
We bought it 30 years ago from the Owens family. And, and we built on it, and the city said, well, you either have to pipe it under or you have to leave it open. So we decided to leave it open because piping under would be so expensive. And it's just, the more water we get through, the deeper it gets. You know, it does run off eventually, but it is just a lot of water. So that needs to be addressed when they build.
Okay, thank you. Sir, you were next, you walked up here quicker, come on up.
My name is Bay Kelly. I live at 1211 Jenkins Drive, or 1211 Jenkins Drive. I just wanna add my voice to the opposition. I have a child who bicycled, or bicycles to Pike Elementary with a group of four other kids. She walked to Cary Woods, we're dealing with two elementary schools at two different corners. I am very curious about this sidewalk plan. I'd love to, I'd love to see evidence of that because it's, when she was attending Cary Woods, it was a dangerous walk, even with us attending her, and the sidewalk or the walking area that was given to us was, you know, not raised. And, you know, and all these other concerns. So it's the connectivity issue.
Not the townhouse, just to clarify, it's the connectivity that you're, have the issue with. You're not, because we're talking about the use as well of the townhouses.
Right.
Okay, and then, just out of, is it a Public Works? Who does, who has the sidewalk plan?
Engineering.
Engineering. So you can visit the city offices in engineering, and they can show you what's the plan.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Please sign in if you haven't. Sir.
Rob Welbaum, 1120 Jenkins Drive. And I wanna make a comment on something one of my neighbors said a minute ago. You can't fight City Hall. I disagree. That's what part of this is about.
Amen.
And City Council, that's what government is. And I thought, coming in here, my, my fight was with the developer. But I've learned now, my fight is with City Hall. And I'll tell you why that is.
We're here, we're here for you.
So, obviously, I'm opposed to this conditional use. One, honestly, I don't believe the townhouse, townhomes are compatible with the current nature of the area, which it will be adjacent to, single-family homes. I'm opposed to it, but that's not my biggest opposition in this plan. My biggest opposition is the connectivity to Owens Road, to North Donahue. It will change the nature of the neighborhood. This part of the neighborhood is very quiet, family-oriented, as everyone has said. In fact, before my phone dies, it's on 1%, I wanna show you. This, my neighbor here that just spoke about her children. This is her house that affronts that road. You see the Cozy Coop, the tricycle, the slide, the basketball. She's my neighbor. And that's what you're, that's what this connectivity will put many, many more cars on, right where all these kids are. My kids, they rode bikes, they did roller skates, they, they walked to school some, and it's very quiet back there. And this will change the, the nature of that, that area. I wanna address some of the things that were stated in some of the, in the application. Under Analysis, Conditional Use, Purpose, and Standards, Section A, it says a proposed use shall be in harmony with the standard in the ordinance. It is. And, and the developer did, someone did mention barely. It is barely in. The standards, 5.5 units per acre, proposed 21 townhomes, really on 3.8 acres, is what I read anyhow. That's pretty tight. Seven of those would fit on my property. So I just don't believe that the proposed use is in harmony with what's around there. Is it, is it in harmony with the ordinance in, in the zoning? It might be, but as it was said right here, barely. This is putting all this high density next to single-family homes. In Section B, it says proposed use will not have adverse effect on adjacent properties or character of the neighborhood. That's not true. This would have adverse effect. This development would have adverse effect and change the character of the adjacent properties. Traffic would increase due to the new residences that are there, but more so due to connecting to North Donahue there on, on Owens Road. In the Staff, Staff Comments section indicates this is a growing area as evidenced by the Walmart in the apartment complex located just north of this area, Donahue Crossing, someone also mentioned some other areas. I'd like to point out that Donahue Crossing is not a proper comparable property. It's an apartment complex. It's fully contained within itself. And I know this because my daughter lives there, college student that lives there. It is not connected to a neighborhood. That's a big difference. It is not comparable. And it, it makes me angry that the city says that because it is not comparable. The staff goes on to say connectivity in the city is of importance to decrease traffic loads. I don't disagree. I mean, I was late getting here, trying to get across town. Didn't realize we were Item 18, so that works, it's fine. But sometimes the, the city staff has been known to suggest connectivity for connectivity's sake. In fact, the City Council recently denied staff recommendations on connectivity when they felt it was unwarranted. And I think this is one of those situations. Staff also commented this development will provide access to Donahue Drive for Cary Woods residents. Find me one Cary Woods residence that wants to be connected to Donahue Drive by way of Owens Road. Did the city talk to anyone about this that lives in Cary Woods? No, they did not. It, it goes on to say that residents are currently limited to Cary Drive in West Drake Avenue. We're good with that. Cary Woods is an established neighborhood. Our part of the neighborhood over there, where this is being suggested, is 40 years old. Those stubouts were done more than 40 years ago. You know, if the developer wants to build in this area, I don't see a reason why they can't do it, but not stubout to, not stubout to our neighborhood. In closing, I just wanna mention that I've talked with City Councilman Kelly Griswold, who is Ward Two. He's opposed to this for the reasons of, one, you know, mixing uses there of townhomes and single-family homes on 3.8 acres. He's also opposed to connecting it to Cary Woods. Cary Woods and North Donahue in this location, he knows it will be detrimental to the neighborhood, and he knows the residents don't want it. So when, when I heard what you said, and I know my time's up and I'll finish, that's what made me angry, is that the city is pushing this connectivity. And the connectivity is a problem in this project. Cary Woods residents, it's, it's put in this, this language here. It's for the benefit of Cary Woods residents. That's not true. Cary Woods residents do not want this. Furthermore, a year ago, we met with, there was something that was coming up about this area at that time. We met with Cary Woods residents, we met with the mayor at the time, Bill Hamm, and also City Councilman Ron Anders. And he was also opposed at that time to connecting the Cary Woods neighborhood to Donahue Drive at that area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael Tulier, 543 Owens Road. I live just a couple of doors down from Stuart, so I'm also at the dead end. And the sign says dead end, not stubout, so I think that's kinda funny. But one of the issues with connectivity I have is that we already have a precedent and an example of what happens when you connect the Cary Woods neighborhood to North Donahue, and that's at Cary Lane. So that's a very small dogleg, kinda more toward Drake Middle School, kinda going down that area. When we moved in to the Cary Woods area 18 years ago, we noticed that there was quite a bit of drive-through and cut-through to that area, 45 miles an hour right off North Donahue, right into the neighborhood. And the city noticed it was such a problem that there's actually a turnabout there now. So I think that there's a very strong precedent for what happens when you connect a small, quiet neighborhood like ours to a busy 45, 50 mile an hour road like North Donahue. So in the absence of the withdrawal of the connectivity suggestion, I would certainly hope that the city would follow its precedent there at Cary Lane and look at some traffic calming devices, turnabout and whatnot there. But of course, connectivity is the major issue, but somehow calming that, bringing it into the neighborhood, slowing that traffic down, would be, would be paramount. So thank you.
Anybody else that has something other than connectivity? I think we've got that one down. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. You stood up? Okay, go ahead.
Sophia Willemska.
Still open, okay.
Okay, thank you. At 5:33 Owens Road, I'd like to echo the sentiments of all of my neighbors. You know, this is a very sleepy neighborhood and-
Connectivity is the issue?
Connectivity is the issue, but, you know, the other issue that kind of upset me was that I also didn't get a packet, and I don't understand why because I would be directly impacted by it. Many of my neighbors didn't. And really, you know, when this kind of action happens, it affects our trust and our officers of the city. I think that this is something that affects us, and we should have been informed of it. Connectivity is an issue, safety is, is an issue, and quite honestly, property values. I think that right now it's a quiet neighborhood. When that connectivity, if we're connected, our property values are gonna go down. My, my family, my neighbors, all of us have invested, have built lives there. And if that were to occur, to occur, all of us would, I think, experience financial losses. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Okay, now I'm gonna close this public hearing. Just one thing before we move on, just can you make a point about the notification process? We, that's been a longstanding, there, we get a lot of comments about that, but there is, there is a process for notifying.
There, there are three ways in which we notify. We were legally obligated to run an ad in a paper of local publication, which the only paper of local publication is the Auburn Villager. So we do that. We are required to send out certified letters to adjacent property owners. So adjacent property owners in the ordinance is defined as abutting the subject property or directly across the right-of-way from the subject property. And then the final way we notify is through posting of public hearing signs on the subject property, and we, we- And we include a little plastic sleeve with proxy maps that give people contact information on how to contact the planner of record on the case, and also to visit our website if they'd like to review any of the materials in the packet.
And I'd also like to mention that there is, you can get onto the city website and get into a, an information push from the city that tells you when, you know, you can pick your meetings, and they tell you when they're going to happen.
It'll give you an email notifier and a link to the information.
It's called e-notifier. I was about to make a plug for e-notifier, because I use it. And I probably get six or seven text messages a day, because I've signed up for everything. And it lets you know when information is posted on the city's website. You can look at agendas, and you can quickly look through a two-page agenda and see if there's anything that's relevant to your, your property or something near your property. So, highly recommend it.
Well, we've closed the public hearing, but two comments. One, Auburn Villager is not... Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
It's a local paper. The paper physically has to be published in the city of Auburn. The OA News is physically published in Opelika.
Sir, sir, the public hearing is closed, so please...
If you don't have a local, if you don't have a local paper available, then you go to the next best. But if you have a paper in your jurisdiction, you're required to use it.
State law. Okay, the representative would like to make a couple of comments before we deliberate.
Thank you. So, I keep hearing connectivity, connectivity, connectivity. I do have, I did bring a thumb drive that shows the original layout if we want to see it and look at that, that doesn't show the connection to Owens. I knew that was going to be a concern from the neighbors.
You knew there was a stub out there, right?
Sir?
You knew that was a stub out to your property, or your client's property?
Yes.
Okay. So, you knew that it was the city's intent that those properties be connected. But you don't want to connect because you don't want to make anybody angry at your project. So, let's just be honest.
Well, I am being honest, sir. They wanted the townhomes to buffer the single-family residential from the arterial of Donahue, which is pretty standard in that area. Along Donahue, you see townhomes, apartments in that same general area. Again, the developer didn't have a preference whether that connects or not.
Okay.
And, and what we're talking about here is whether or not townhomes should be allowed as a conditional use.
That's right.
Everything else, I'm not, we can go through each item if we want to talk through each, each comment, but that's the main purpose of this meeting, is whether the townhomes meets the conditional...
I don't know that I heard any specific, you know, opposition to that.
Right.
It's the, it's the access.
I mean, we can talk about stormwater, we can talk about all the others, but that's, that'll all be handled during the RT process.
That's right. Okay.
Let me just make one. I sort of sense that if I want to protect our city staff, they are not pushing connectivity on us. They are responsible for pointing out what our policy is and where the stub outs are, and the principles of planning behind that, and traffic management and so forth. So, they're not pushing it.
Which is encouraging.
And we have the choice of what we want to do.
That's right.
May I ask a question about how we'll see this again, too, as well? If we approve the conditional use for the townhomes tonight, which is what we're really looking at, are we going to see again...
You can put conditions on it.
Are we going to see again a plat, though, that would show final plat and connectivity? And I mean, are these issues we can revisit?
You'll see subdivision plat subsequently. The connectivity issue can be addressed...
By condition.
It is, yes.
It can be, it can be addressed as part of the conditional use consideration, if it's shown on the plan, and it can also be addressed by, by the subdivision plat as well.
And we're not shutting the door on that conversation?
And that's happened, that's happened in both cases. You know, with, of course, the difference being a conditional use moves on to the City Council, subdivision's under the purview of the Planning Commission.
Exactly, okay. Thank you.
And I frankly think this is one of those times for the, the exception to the rule sort of thing. You know, in terms of compatibility with the area, and then we've got the desire, I don't know if you want to call it desire, but the, the developer having, being okay with the not having it. You know, I think that's a good idea to preclude the connection.
I'd like to go on the record and just disagree. I think that the city has an interest in eliminating enclaves and basically encouraging connectivity throughout the city. This is one of the, this is kind of one of the examples, we get this all the time, where not having connectivity through your neighborhood is something that individual neighborhoods like, but it's bad for everyone else in general. It increases, you know, it makes more traffic jams, a lot, there are a lot of negative externalities that happen when you don't have connectivity throughout the city. And I just think that as a principle of planning, we have to kind of follow, you know, that principle. I mean, if the City Council wants to, you know, make a different choice, that's one thing. I think as an advisory board, I think we need to stick by the principles of planning, that we need to eliminate enclaves and increase connectivity throughout the city. That's my opinion.
Well, I mean, I'll just go out on a limb here and say, I don't think that townhouses are compatible in the first place, which is really what we're supposed to be discussing ultimately, and being the buffer from Donahue, but where's the buffer for the people in the Owens Road neighborhood area that, that just have the power company easement? I don't think those, that layout is compatible at all.
These will be, these do have to follow the single-family definition.
Yes, sir. DDH zoning, yes, sir.
I'll go out and somewhere.
Go ahead.
I mean, I just feel like there are several different scenarios that could make this more palatable to us as a commission as a whole. I mean, personally, if, if, if the connectivity to Owens, and I know there's another connectivity that we're sort of glossing over, because that just connects to those 10 homes up there, and I don't want to discount those people's concerns about that.
But that is also allowed by right.
But it's, it's allowed by right, those homes up there, and they do have to connect to somewhere, or they can't get to their homes. But, but the cut-through, I think, is what's creating so much concern. And I don't know if having just all single-family homes with the elimination of townhomes and still having the connection is more palatable to people, or if keeping the townhomes and removing the connection is an equal option. I understand as a planning body that connectivity is ideal for fire, police, EMS, and those types of services. So, I guess I hesitate to make a motion, because I'm, I still actually feel a little conflicted, in my opinion, of this. So, if anyone else has thoughts they want to add in.
I'll just make an additional comment. I never, ever, ever, ever like to go against the staff, because they're so incredible at what they do, and they're thoughtful and deliberative on top of being very smart. But in this case, and this would be the second time since I've been on this commission, that the connectivity doesn't match the current structure of what we have. It's a great idea in theory, but these are older neighborhoods with smaller streets, windy roads, no sidewalks, all of those things. If you drive through there, it's just not a good, safe idea for this particular circumstance. In theory, again, I think it's great, and we should do it most of the time, but in this case, it's an exception to me.
May I ask a question? Elaborate a little bit on these densities, whether it's townhouses or single-family homes, and what's allowed, and which may be more or less dense.
Single, oh, go ahead.
All right, so, townhomes obviously are designed by nature to be of a denser nature than single-family. You have...
Detached, you mean?
Correct. Detached, single-family, as opposed to attached, single-family. The, the area around this development, to the gentleman's comment about the comparison on the opposite side of the Shuggerdon-Donahue intersection, that comparison was not made from a density standpoint, and was merely an example of how this particular intersection is continuing to develop, and will continue to develop, whether this is approved or not. As a result of that, you're going to need to see denser areas of, denser developments that provide, provide access along arterial roads that prevent more traffic than is necessary moving past those developments into single-family detached areas. Hence the reason for, hence the reason for front, pushing those, these townhome developments closer towards the arterial. As a, as a general principle, we are trying our best to make sure that we encourage a mix of housing units. We have plenty of issues that you are well aware of, about the need for market-rated homes in this town, and promoting the opportunities for developers to satisfy that market and that need. This is one way that the city staff can, can promote that on a case-by-case basis. No development will be the linchpin of us being able to satisfy that. However, if we, as a staff, don't promote that in every development, nothing will get done.
Well said.
Let me read this, and you can kind of maybe clarify it for me. The current zoning district permits up to five and a half dwelling units per acre. The proposed densities of this development are a net density of 5.5 dwelling units per acre in the townhouse area, and a gross density of 2.5 dwelling units per acre.
Yes.
Across that whole property.
Yeah, so what's being proposed as townhouses is no more dense than what would be allowed with single-family.
That's correct.
Overall, this development is less dense than what could be allowed.
I will also point out that that measurement was my measurement, using this site, site plan that does not have specified for the townhomes. You might be able to see a little bit of difference in it. I wouldn't expect it to be much, but yes.
On the agenda, we're only approving the land use for townhouses. We are not, we're not approving a plat or the connectivity.
Right, it's the use.
In light of...
Well, it can be conditioned. The connectivity can be a condition.
Now, we're only addressing the townhouse use. We're not addressing...
But I would like to put a condition on that. We can put a condition on it. This is a conditional use approval.
I understand that. I, I, I would...
You are both correct.
I would make a motion that we approve item, approve the townhouse conditional use for Item 18. Period. And when they come back, we can address, when they do the plat, we can address the connectivity.
I would second that.
I would like to amend that before we move on. And so, the amendment that I would like to put, the motion right now is to approve the use as is. Now, to make an amendment, I would like to make the amendment that we close that access at Owens Road. And how would I properly say that? And not have that, that access between those two...
I think you said it. The traffic conditions are within the purview of a conditional use review. I had mentioned earlier, you can address, you could choose to address the connectivity issue as part of the conditional use or not. It could also be addressed at the plat stage as well. The City Council could also address, will also be addressing these same issues, or at least looking at the same application.
This is a recommendation to them.
That's correct.
Do we have to vote on the amendment, and then do I have a word?
Right.
Yes.
So, that's, the amendment would be closed, do not open that access on Owens Road.
Ian, do you have a...
No.
No.
No, that's, that's our, it's just Owens Road we're talking about.
Do you have a second to your amendment?
That's what I'm looking for.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's do a voice vote on this.
No.
Robin Bridges.
I'm voting on the amended motion.
Right.
Amended motion.
I vote yes, on the amended motion.
Phil Chancellor.
Yes.
Janet Jaeger.
Yes.
Mark Blasenby.
No.
Marcus Marshall.
No.
Warren Ford.
No.
Nonna Reese.
No.
Yes.
I'll go for her.
Wrong.
Bob Bright and Paul.
No. Okay, so what do we, what do we have there?
Four or five against. Five against. So, does that mean the petition in its original...
So, the amendment fails.
The amendment fails.
So, now we go back and work on the motion, have, so we'll have a second vote on the motion?
Correct.
Which is still on the table.
Townhouses' conditional use.
Period, as, as stated.
Separate from the connectivity.
That's correct.
That'll come back before us again for more...
That's exactly right.
So, I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
You did. You already have a second.
Already have a second. Okay, so we're just having a vote. Voice vote, again.
Jane Litzow.
Yes.
Robin Bridges, no.
Phil Chancellor.
No.
Janet Jaeger.
Yes.
Mark Blasenby.
Yes.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren Ford.
Yes.
Nonna Reese.
No.
Bob Bright and Paul.
Yes. Motion carries.
If I could, just for the benefit of the audience, this application will be considered by the City Council at their next meeting, which is in five days. So, that will be Tuesday at 7 o'clock. There will be a public hearing at that time.
So, this is only a recommendation to them, it's not been a final decision. Okay, let's get back on track we were on earlier. Let's see. Which brings us to Agenda Item Number 11. Now, wait till they clear out for a minute.
You okay?
Start sucking that water down there.
What number are we going back to?
I'm going back to Item Number 11.
Can we do the...
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move along. This is Agenda Item Number 11, PL 2019-449, MEMS Trail, Ninth Edition. Can you please take your conversation outside? Thank you. MEMS Trail, Ninth Edition, Phase B, Preliminary Plat Approval for Performance Residential Subdivision, Ms. Robeson.
That's correct. This is a request from Clayton Properties. They're the property owner. They're applying for a revised preliminary plat approval for a 55-lot performance residential subdivision, 52 residential lots, and three open space lots. This is the original preliminary plat that was approved in 2017. And at that time, the property was owned by a different owner, and I think in 2019, this and a Phase 10 and the remaining undeveloped portion of MEMS Trail was sold to a new developer. And after that, the Phase 9 was developed in Phases A and B. A was approved about a month or so ago. This is the proposed plat that is in front of you this evening. The density of this phase is 2.2 dwelling units an acre. They are required a maximum of seven and a half units per acre, per phase, and they are also required a open space requirement per phase of 20 percent. And there's been, a couple of my comments are pertaining to open space. This is actually a two-sheet plat, and there is a lot up here that was originally part of Phase 10. And I think that should be moved back up to Phase 10, and then the open space here is deficient by about two and a third acres. I do, we do recommend approval with staff comments, and I think one of the most significant comments is the connectivity of this area. is the connectivity of this area. Just by looping this road, these three cul-de-sacs here and bringing this down to bisect the loop road would offer better connectivity for the neighborhood. The previous plat was three cul-de-sacs and then an additional cul-de-sac has been added for this one. So, I really think by adding those together and bisecting it with a central road would be better efficient for traffic purposes and connectivity. We did receive a few comments, not on this one, it's on Phase 10. I did not receive any correspondence on this one.
Okay. Thank you. Is a representative here?
Yes, Wes.
Anything or...
I just want to address, I appreciate staff's review and everything they do. We do have a concern with joining those as far as the connectivity. That was driven by the topography of the site and we brought a thumb drive, I don't know who we talked to, about getting those pulled up. But if we could look at the existing topography, the Fountain View mansion that sits right there, south of the middle cul-de-sac, is really high, elevated above everything around it. And so, when we installed the center cul-de-sac, so I'd like to look at, yeah, the existing contours. I thought I rotated these beforehand so they would be the same view, but... All right, so the grade differences we have, if you look at the cul-de-sac to the far left and the center cul-de-sac, the center cul-de-sac sets up on a knoll, it's roughly 17 feet of elevation difference between the lower one on the left side and the center one in the middle. And then there's 26 feet of elevation difference between the center one and the one to the opposite end, to the right or to the east. So, that's what kind of drives what we were proposing to do is you add that cul-de-sac, you've got a lot of grade difference. And then ideally, if we loop them, we can loop them to an extent. If we do, what we would have is lots backing up to one another, which we prefer not to do because right now we have these nice little fingers in between those cul-de-sacs, in between the back of those lots, where we can really get a lot of grade change, get some slopes in, get some drainage in as far as adding swells between those. And that's shown on the proposed grading. So, we're trying to eliminate having swells cut through the back of the yards, get them off of the lots and more into those open space areas. So, that's kind of what drove this configuration. Again, the previous layout was approved with the cul-de-sacs. We just added one additional on that short center cul-de-sac, adding three, four, five, about 12 lots or so. That's really our reason. The proposed grades, those are a little bit closer from the left to the center. There's 14 feet of elevation change. From the center to the right, there's about 16 feet of elevation change. Could we pull up the PDF with the proposed grades? MEMS proposed contours? Yep. So, that just kind of shows, you can see the large slopes in between the lots in those open space areas and trying, the effort to get the drainage off of the lots into the areas between and then through a swell and picking up with culverts underneath the road, taking those to the ponds. So, we can reconfigure those lots and we sketched that up as well. So, I have a PDF of that lot layout. I don't have contours on this one. It's the revised lot layout. It's hard to see. Sorry, I should have done it a different color. It would be very challenging for us to connect the center to the cul-de-sac on the left. We can potentially connect those two on the right side. In doing that, we actually would gain three lots, but we're going to lose open space. And we're going to create some headaches as far as grading, drainage, how do we handle the stormwater coming off the hill where right now we have an avenue to take that stormwater to a detention pond? Now, we're going to have a large hill with drainage running to the back of lots, which we're trying to avoid. And then you have lots backing up to each other. So, that's where we're at and that's what drove our design of having these. So, just wanted to kind of talk through that and explain that. So, we would request that that requirement be removed. That's the only comment we had.
Okay, thank you. All right, this requires a public hearing. So, would anybody like to come forward and speak on this, the preliminary plat? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, discussion, motion.
In the staff report, it says, however, because there are no topographical features preventing these streets from connecting the two outside cul-de-sacs, should be joined to form the loop road and MEMS Cove should be extended southward to bisect the other loop road. We don't see this often and we, because we're all busy doing other things in our vocations, but the number one goal in the traffic study for our future land use plan, not a goal, but the number one goal is to try to eliminate the number of dead-end streets as we progress with these plats. And I think it's good to follow that plan the best that we can, when we can, especially with it being our number one goal. And I wouldn't, I'd like to see a revised site plan with those goals in mind before I decided on this one. I'm a little confused. He's presented an alternative, is what he's presenting tonight, opposed to what you had in our packet. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's right.
So, if we, but his proposal tonight does meet the technical requirements of our subdivision regulations.
Believe it does.
Well, short, short open space as presented tonight.
Correct.
But if he goes with what he submitted earlier, we'd have less open space than that, right?
With the revision, I think with the revision, you're taking up that finger right there, aren't you? So, you're...
So, we would be removing...
Right.
You'd have less under the revision.
Correct. But there's, all of, south of this is undeveloped except for the mansion and it's all still one lot. So, they've got plenty of area to work with to meet their open space requirement.
I believe, I believe we meet the open space requirement if we count the area that we were previously counting as part of 10. If we take that back, which I think we're okay doing, taking that back and adding that up, we can increase our open space by adding some of this to the sidewalk. We're okay doing that.
But if it meets the requirement...
Well, yeah, my question is then, you've just answered, I think you did, the fact he can meet not the, all the technical aspects of our subregs to include the adequate, appropriate, required open space, right? With this revision.
I'm Grant McHaleb. I'm with Clayton Properties. We meet that requirement with the submitted plat and we can also meet that requirement with a revised...
Okay.
The, as Wes mentioned, you know, we will pick up three lots if we do the revision. But the question that I would ask and would love to have answered is, you know, this was approved in 2017 with three dead-end cul-de-sacs. And now, we have just added one and we are now suddenly being asked to connect all three. So, in being consistent, I understand connectivity, but we have great connectivity throughout the neighborhood, throughout sidewalks, walkability. I'm just like to understand why the...
That's true. I failed to do the connectivity in the initial review and we have just been seeing cul-de-sac after cul-de-sac in several neighborhoods. So, we've just been keen on the review.
Right. And that's fair. And so, the biggest thing that Wes brought up and I'd like to just make sure everybody understands is that by making the connection, we're going to send stormwater to backs of ponds and through swells between backyards versus now we have channeled it to me and out there. So, either, I don't know which is more important.
And I appreciate the idea of this, of connectivity. I live in a neighborhood that's very similar to this proposed, this plat we're looking at. And in my neighborhood, our little cul-de-sacs are sort of a sense of their own little communities. And so, each cul-de-sac street sort of has its own little family of people that live together. I'm kind of neutral on it mainly because to connect these three cul-de-sacs just connects three cul-de-sacs. I don't really see that much of a benefit to overall traffic flow in and out of this neighborhood by connecting those three cul-de-sacs. I mean, you're only passing five or six houses on each street to get to the end of these cul-de-sacs. So...
I had this conversation at Packet and looked at where this is in the grand scheme of all of MEMS Trail.
It doesn't, there's no really way for, if you added that street, for it to connect anywhere else.
Revised again, is this, the green lines and all that?
The unique topography has, gives me some relief in terms of connectivity versus how to develop it to minimize. As we know, we just saw people come and show, we get every meeting, people bringing pictures of water running through their yards. So, I can live with cul-de-sacs.
Agreed. Well, do I hear a motion then?
I would make a motion to approve...
No, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So, basically, the idea is that we're going to be, the motion, well, I got to wait till you get the...
I'm going to make the motion to approve the plat, but to remove the requirement for the connectivity of the three cul-de-sacs.
Second.
And I would like to add, with staff comments and conditions of approval, to move that lot back to this plat to meet open space.
So, that's an amendment? Or is that an amendment?
We don't have a second yet.
Yeah, I mean, this is, the current, as I understand it, is deficient on open space.
Correct.
So, that will have to be remedied in order to be able to be approved.
It was two different little comments. One was to move the lot 425 back off sheet two.
If that lot stays, it's good.
Okay. And then the second one was, would be to, with staff comments, but while removing the recommendation for vehicular and pedestrian connectivity through Fountain View Court.
Correct.
Okay, so, let's reiterate the motion real quick. Make sure I understand it too. What we're doing is removing two staff comments, right?
Were you wanting to remove engineering's comment as well? Is that what you said?
Yes, there was an engineering comment and planning.
Well, that was the vehicular and pedestrian connect...
That one was mine.
Okay, right. No, that's under engineering.
So, there's a planning, there's a planning comment, join Fountain View Court. Remove that. And then there was an engineering comment.
Right.
Vehicular and pedestrian connectivity.
There's both of those.
Remove, remove that.
But then also, huh? Or?
Pedestrian or...
You just want to remove the whole comment?
I do, I do, yes.
Remove the whole comment?
Yes.
Okay.
But then there was two that dealt with the open space.
One for the lot to move back off of sheet two and meet open required space. All four of those.
Engineering is a recommendation, right? Recommend, what's the other one?
It's, we got, I don't, I'm not there yet either. So, which, what are we removing? So, planning, we're removing join Fountain View Court. That's one.
Planning, once you say it again, I'm sorry.
It's the join Fountain View Court and Barkstall Way.
Okay, join, okay. So, that one's not, that one is a, okay.
Remove, remove that one. Remove an engineering comment saying we recommend vehicular...
Comment number two.
Comment number two.
Correct.
So, that's two. What was the other two of them then? There was a note.
A note to move lot 425 from sheet two and make it contiguous with sheet one.
So, that, remove that one. That's the comment two.
Is that that last planning? Oh, no, it's the second one, right here. Okay, that's three. What was the fourth one?
There were two separate comments about the sheet two.
The required open space, the fourth one, under planning.
Okay. That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. She made the motion. I just added comments.
Okay. Got a motion over here, got a second here. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 11. We're getting a little punchy here, guys. 12, excuse me. 2019-477, MEMS Trail 10th Edition, A B Preliminary Plat Approval for Performance Residential Development. Ms. Robeson again.
This is for Phase 10, 56-lot preliminary plat, performance residential, single-family. There is one open space lot and 55 residential lots. Initially, this was only supposed to be final plat approval. However, the preliminary plat expired back in May. So, we are here again just to revisit the preliminary plat.
Any change?
There is no change. Well, there is in fact a change. Previously, this was a lot here, an open space lot, and this is the open space lot. Now, that is one lot.
That we just put down.
And this is all open space, which was initially open space.
Okay.
That's really the only change.
All right.
The density of this phase is 2.46, which is in keeping with the rest of the pages in MEMS Trail, the maximum density per phase is seven and a half units per acre. We did receive correspondence on this one pertaining to the adjoining property here. There is an easement that provides access to this property that runs through this lot here. On the plat, it's noted as...
Remnant.
As a remnant parcel, but one of the comments is to make that a true lot. Ms. Naftel, that property owner, has been in touch with us and I'm not sure if he's been in touch with the applicant regarding that access. The property has frontage on Shell Tumor, so they, I'm not sure if Shell Tumor would allow another curb cut. There may be a possibility of giving her a curb cut on Rutland Road through that remnant property since that access is going to be taken from her lot and that may be easier than granting her a curb cut on Shell Tumor since it's controlled by the state. But that's something that she could work out with the applicant. And that is the only correspondence that I had on this place and we do recommend it through the...
Okay, thank you. Would the representative like to make any comments?
We have been in contact with the Naftels.
Can you, if you're going to speak, can you come up to the microphone?
I'm Grant McHaleb. We've been in contact with the Naftels. You know, I have let them know that we have no problem giving them an easement. There is a long, long story with them that, you know, it's up for interpretation. But again, we have no intent of removing their ability to access the plat. However, they are on their own to attain right-of-way access. And there is some very specific language and defeat that they are carrying and using to claim that access from our side.
It's going to be a civil matter, right?
Right, right. Yeah, there's no point. But you have to know, I have given them my best intended words. There's no point, but let you know, I have given them my best intended word to.
Good. Thanks. Case requires a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this preliminary plat. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, motion?
Move on approval, item twelve, with staff comments and as a conditional.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number thirteen, PL two nineteen, twenty nineteen, four four five, which is the final plat approval for that particular item. Ms. Robeson.
Yes, this is the final plat approval request for the previous plat that was just approved. Fifty-five residential lots, one open space lot, MEMS Trail 10th Edition.
Okay, this does not require a public hearing, so I have a motion to approve.
To approve, item thirteen.
Motion in a second, all those in favor.
With staff comments.
With staff comments, okay. Motion in a second.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Agenda item number fourteen, PL twenty nineteen, four eighteen, TD. It's a recommendation for, to the city council for a conditional use approval for a commercial and entertainment use, a lounge and event center. Mr. Kip.
That's the condition request. The property is in urban core. The applicant is Jonathan Davis, and the property owner is NAH Downtown LLC. There is just a correction for the minutes that the staff report does not reflect the correct owner of RBN Magnolia Plaza LLC. The correct owner is NAH Downtown LLC. There's a bit of a, a long history with this property, has lounge uses, restaurant uses, retail uses. The property has, the space is actually a tenant space, it's not the entire building. It's the tenant space behind Fusion Bar and Restaurant. It is previously a lounge, two different lounges actually, and previously in Italy and Flago. Kind of went back and forth between lounge and restaurant uses. The applicant is requesting this because lounge uses are conditional in the urban core, and also because there's event centers or music venues, which is to be a proposed music venue, are pretty much categorized to all other uses, so no reason why it's conditional. The applicant provided a floor plan, proposed floor plan, and shown the layout. There'd be no changes to the building, as far as I'm aware. An applicant would take, or the clients would take access from the hallway or from the internal lobby. Staff recommends approval, and there were no major comments, just a couple citizen communications, just for information purposes. The applicant is here.
What's currently in the space? It's vacant, okay.
The applicant like to say anything?
Any questions?
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motion?
To approve, item fourteen, with staff comments.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. The next case is number, item fifteen, twenty nineteen, four four two, one twenty-one Mitchum. Recommendation to city council for performance residential development. Mr. Weintraub.
The property owner is definitely a design group. There are authorized representatives, there's been a lot of activity on this property in the last year. This had previously been an office use in a historic home, and the applicant has turned the home back to residential use. There was a rear garage building that had been, a long time ago, public college student park that had been converted to office as well. He is requesting to build a two-unit with three bedrooms each apartment building on the back here. It is not a student type of housing, so it's not an ADDU or private laboratory, because of the, there's a core plan, there's shared baths, so there's, this is not that issue. Could be rented to students. The property is about a little less than a half an acre. The land use for this area is corridor redevelopment preservation, which encourages reuse of existing buildings, and this system is in the historic district, reuse of the property, at least part of those buildings. You can see the location of the two units, it's well behind the main structure here. The site, there's a lot of comments about the site plan. This, when it was an office use, allowed to have, was allowed to have a hundred percent of the lot paid, where when you go into the residential, it's a lot less. So the site plan will come back for DRT, and if there needs to be any other requests, then it'll go through the proper channels. So we're looking just at the particular use for the property. There are some renderings, so the front elevation will have the entrance facing the street for, even though it's behind there. A lot of the windows, the matches went through the historic preservation commission. A lot of the windows types, the placement, those things are similar to the current house and meet those standards.
Cool.
Rear elevation, we've got doors on the rear and windows on the rear. And then again, this just goes into more details with the floor space. If you see the second floor, there is a shared bath, so this is not a unit that has the same number of beds or baths. It's still located, surrounded by a lot of commercial uses. There's the two banks over here. The Catholic Church has this other property. So this is more so in a commercial, a little higher intensity use than the other properties in the historic district toward north. We had one correspondence from one of the residents of the historic district at the very end of the district, at five thirty-five North College, who did not want to see additional student housing in this area. Again, this is not necessarily a student-heared product, it would be available to the market. And I would be happy to answer any other questions. This has been approved by the HPC, the design of the building and the placement.
All right, thank you. Would you like to say anything?
I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks. All right, requires a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing for this property. Anybody like to come forward? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Ask for questions, comments, motion?
Move to approve, item number fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion, with staff comments, second and a motion, further discussion, add staff comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. The next item is the, is agenda item number sixteen, which is twenty nineteen, four five one Buckner Property. Now, this has been requested by the applicant, one second, this has been requested by the applicant to be postponed until a date certain ten October, so I just need a motion.
I move to table, till date certain ten. Postpone? I'm so sorry, I'm postponing. Sorry, new words.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those again say no. Motion carries. Okay, let's see, we'll move on to agenda item number seventeen, which is PL twenty nineteen four five two, ETI Office Building. Mr. Kip.
This is another use request for a warehouse building and office. Again, same situation, it's in the CBD, so offices are planted by rights, warehouse component of the development. The filling supports the use here, light and dudry supporting commercial uses. Here's the site plan, there's some pretty minor comments in there, but it's a lot to go to DRT, so let's get, fix them, look at and do that process. Staff is recommending approval. They have to answer any questions, did not receive any comments, think that they should just kind of highlight that it is, does a butt against some duplexes to the north, but there's lots of other warehouse and office commercial support uses, but also a butt against those, so just something to consider.
Okay. Right, okay. The, this requires a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward, speak on this? Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Questions, comments, motion?
Recommend approval with staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries, and then we'll go to the last one, which is now, agenda item number nineteen, which is twenty nineteen, four five four Cypress Cove. This is an appeal of a denial of public works design and construction manual waiver request. Mr. Crowdes.
With our community design supplemental manual, right turn lanes are required for access and development, collectors or arterials for developments or rebuildments. In this case, they submitted a waiver request to not have to do the right turn lane, and it was denied, so they are choosing to appeal that. The request, all the support material they sent in with it, they did up, and a response letter, open your pocket. So, I will answer your question.
I have a quick question. I was reading the request for, the original request for design waiver, and they talk about the hardship, and it says, "A very conservative approach was taken on the warrant analysis and acceleration lanes, and they're still not warranted in this location." I don't get it. Can you explain a little bit on that? Because that's telling me, well, can you, are you the representative? Can you explain what that means, so I understand that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Parker Lewis, Hydroengineering. Yeah, basically, what we've got is a sort of a policy, and I've decided that if it's a collector or it's an arterial, it has to have turn lanes.
Right.
So, there's, the language in there has been sort of changed from the warrant analysis language to allow the city engineer to look at, I guess, the development potential of the area, together with traffic concerns. So for example, South Gay, south of Manchester, is a collector or an arterial. Turn lanes there probably don't make sense if someone develops three houses on a lot that used to have one house, right? Norton Rawls, et cetera. There's lots of areas where it allows the city engineer to say, "This isn't an appropriate place." Another good example would be the urban core. You know, so some of these businesses, some of these developments that have happened on Glen, from the college right in the urban core, you don't really have room to just throw in right turn lanes and decelerations and things like that. So, so the language is set up to, to prevent us from having Moore's Mill, and Richland Road, and Donahue, and some of these other roads that are large road collector, arterial, where we've had developments that have not ended up having turn lanes, that after the fact, probably needed some turn lanes. So, if you look at it from a strict warrant analysis, to answer your question, we, we looked at it very conservatively, and it just still doesn't need turn lanes. Now, why is that? Well, the reason for that is because at the end of the day, it's Airport Road. And if you look at the development that has occurred at Glen and Airport Road, you've got the Makata and Airport Motors, and now we've got a traffic signal there, and, but over the last twenty-five years, the traffic on Airport Road has really hardly changed. I mean, in a room of a hundred people tonight, there's probably ninety of us that haven't been on Airport Road in the last four weeks. It's just sort of the nature of that road. So, half of Airport Road is the airport, that now the terminal's not even on that side of the road. You turn that ninety-degree turn, and you get on to Sagahatchee, and half of that road is the golf course. Could the golf course be developed? It absolutely, absolutely could. Who's most interested in the golf course?
The airport.
The runway extension. So, we would just request that rather than, rather than making my client put in turn lanes for, our, our analysis actually looks at future growth, okay? And it's still not needed. So, if the Youngs' plan for them was to move and sell, and all of a sudden, they came in with a large apartment complex or something there, that's gonna have, it is CBD land, but everything on there is gonna have to come back to council and to you guys, and really is gonna have to be faced with, do we want this by our airport? Which is exactly what we had to face on this project. So, our request to appeal the denial is simply based on, this is Airport Road, in a similar manner that we would not really require these turn lanes on other streets. I think our policy is a good policy in terms of some of these core streets like Dean, and you know, Richland, and Donahue, and et cetera. And we've done projects recently that had to have turn lanes. This is one of them.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Are there any turn lanes on that Airport Plaza property?
No.
And where does the Airport Road terminate? Does it dead end or something out there? I guess I'm not familiar with the area.
We haven't been on it four weeks.
I haven't been on it four weeks.
So each university drive.
Okay, all right.
What's, what's northeast now? Is that, is that the Bonnet Farm?
Plan Farm.
Right, right next, beyond it, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they actually go, they actually go up and around a little bit on the Sagahatchee. Yeah, this is, that's a version of Dead Man's Curve, because it's a ninety-degree angle, but it's not an issue, because of traffic.
Yeah.
Right, so, but you know, you can see Sagahatchee, you can see the golf course, and these traffic numbers are actually placed, the high school, and there's actually a road that connects to, to that traffic area, so.
Well, I don't think it's gonna warrant it, and I'm not saying it should, but I do think we're gonna see more activity out there, because if you've been to that, the university is developing that aeronautic program, the Delta Educational Building is right off of that one.
Right, and they've got, and they do have expansion plans for some hangars and some office spaces, so they, they will add some vehicles.
But that was kind of considered in your study then, too, though. I mean, you anticipated that.
Right.
Okay, well, okay, thanks. Requires a public hearing? Anybody would like to come forward? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. I'm kind of inclined to say that.
I just asked a question, isn't it, because this reminds me of another case we had, so this, this warrant analysis, this is something that was used before the design and construction manual was updated, right? This is like the old standard?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, we're in a new standard now that says you have to have them, so I just want to make sure that's on the record, but I don't have a strong opinion, but it seems like if we do this every time, we might as well change back to the old method. Why do we even have a new method if we're gonna continue to use the old method?
Or, you know, case-by-case basis, too.
I strongly advocated not, to require it on, on recently, but that was because it was tremendously more developmental potential further down the road from this particular, that particular development. That's why I felt strongly. If there's not gonna be any more development, I just hate to see the first man in.
Right.
Normally, first man in, get by free, when later, we've got to come in either the public or other developers to make the, make the turn lanes. But this is, this is a pretty self-contained little project right there.
Meaning what?
That, that I don't have any, personally, I don't have any problem with, with the waiver request, or the overall denial, whatever we call it.
There's, there's a very strong likelihood, that Sony mentioned earlier, that the airport is gonna have to get involved with the golf course. And the expansion, the extension of the runway will not go, make a left turn into the part of the golf course that's on Sagahatchee Road. So that property will probably, if the golf course goes away, that'll be developed, and it may be well-developed, be, whether it's commercial or residential. So the road, as Allison said in her letter, has a high degree. So, the, the road, as Allison said in her letter, has a high degree of likelihood that in the future, not based on today's traffic count, but in the future, there could be a lot of traffic on that road. And I just, back to the point, I just don't see why we should, you know, miss an opportunity to get a safe, put some safety features on that road from the get-go. And so, we have an opportunity to do that now.
We used to have a standard, it was reviewed, and it was determined that that standard was not adequate enough to do in the long run what the city felt like needed to be done on an arterial roadway, or, or so classified roadway. And you're always going to have the first one, a small one, or you're going, you know, it's always going to be that first one, but I, I just feel in my professional career, it's always been very good to support the staff when they've got specific guidelines that we've given them to follow, and they do that, to, for us to back them on e- each of these situations, and I, I not, I would not support a denial. Excuse me, how'd I say that? I would support the denial.
Okay, will I have a motion on that?
So moved.
What is the motion?
That is correct.
The motion is to deny the waiver, so is there a second?
Appeal, it's actually an appeal.
Deny the appeals, excuse me. So, have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favors, all those against say no.
No.
Voice.
No.
Robin Bridges?
No.
Phil Chansler?
No.
Janet Jager?
No.
Mike Lazzini?
Yes.
Marcus Marshall?
Yes.
Warren McHord?
No.
Johnette Reese?
No.
Bob Wrighton Hall?
Yes.
Three six. So, motion carries to-
Approve.
Approve the appeal.
No, you approve the request. You approve the application.
So, what's, what's, and so the end is-
No, no deceleration.
No deceleration.
You have to make a motion to that, you have to, you have to make that effect.
How many motions for that?
This one fails, so we need a new motion, right?
Yeah, you'll have to go back, all right, now, someone on, someone needs to make a motion to approve.
Someone who's voted that way, yeah.
To approve the appeal? Yes.
Approve the appeal.
I'll make a motion to approve the appeal.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, that means I made a, the wrong decision, it's kind of got there. I'm like, okay, we'll, we'll keep going with it here. Yeah, it wasn't, it wouldn't matter. Okay, so the motion is-
To approve the appeal.
To prove the appeal. And then, we have a second?
Second, did you?
Okay, so we have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Voice vote. Uh, yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what do we, what are we voting for?
Yes, I don't have to put the turn lane.
We have derailed.
We're saying no turn lane.
Okay.
Approve the appeal.
Yes, yes. That's what I meant the first time.
Janet Jager?
Yes.
No.
Marcus Marshall?
No.
Warren McHord?
Yes.
Johnette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Wrighton Hall?
No.
Six three again, so motion carries to grant-
The deceler lane is not, is not required.
It's not required. Okay, thank you. Any communications from the staff?
No, sir.
Okay, then we're-
Good.